Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting, tonight's city council meeting, and tonight's committee of the whole meeting. Very dramatic musical intro, thank you. For the special committee of the whole meeting, let the record show that we have all the council members present save for Alderman Gabe Caven. Alderman Bruno and Alderman Marks, of course, are joining us remotely. With that, folks, item two, new business or public comment. Anyone joining us in the audience this evening? Any questions, comments, remarks you'd like to deliver to the committee? From the dais, any new business or? I do have one, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, and I suspect that I will be echoing the sentiments of many on the committee and perhaps many in the community. All of you have seen the reports released from the Illinois Department of Public Health and King County Public Health Department that our positivity rate continues to increase, our hospitalizations continue to increase. I have received no fewer than nine text messages, phone calls, and emails from citizens who are expressing concern regarding their neighbors, guests of ours, and others in the city who are simply not abiding by what we should all be abiding by, wearing the face masks or face coverings, and of course, keeping socially distant. It is not a pleasant time, I know it's not. We certainly don't want to be in the position where we're sending out law enforcement to crack down, so we are asking for voluntary compliance. I cannot think of any other example in the history of our service to this community where the responsibility rests with all of us individually and collectively if we are to move forward. So with that, I just wanted to make that announcement. I was asked to do so, I'm happy to do so, and I again thank all those who are participating. With that, folks, we're going to jump into our agenda this evening. Item three is to consider resolution number 2020-48 authorizing the execution of a development economic incentive and reimbursement agreement between the City of Geneva and Industry House LLC. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan, seconded by Maladra. I'm going to ask Ms. Dawkins to provide a brief update and summary with respect to this issue and how it differs from the last time we discussed it.
Okay.
Do we have a motion by McGowan and seconded by Maladra? The floor is Ms. Dawkins.
Okay. So as stated, this is an economic incentive agreement regarding the property located at 124 West State Street. While the council considered a similar agreement on August 3, 2020, this is a new agreement. As such, this is not a reconsideration under Roberts rules of a previous action taken by this body, but rather consideration of the new agreement. The city's strategic plan for 2025 indicates a goal of economic vitality with objective number two, develop a resilient local economy through the development of new commercial and industrial opportunities that add to the city's tax base. An action item stated within this objective is to develop programs and policies to facilitate repurposing properties and commercial corridors to meet changing needs of retail and commercial stakeholders. This specific goal and objective was prioritized by the city council at their November 2019 strategic planning workshop for the current fiscal year. The agreement before you this evening for your consideration is in support of the aforementioned objective and action item. As a non-home rule municipality, Geneva has limited resources and tools to help businesses financially. In addition, those tools also come with specific requirements. The proposed sales tax rebate is uniquely possible at this location because the property meets state requirements, including the building has remained less than significantly unoccupied or underutilized for a period of at least one year. It is possible because there is an end user to generate the new tax dollars to create a cycle of investment. It is financeable because the buyer and seller have each conceded on terms to move closer together. The proposed incentive agreement includes no upfront money, uses future tax dollars generated by the occupant business to create a cycle of investment and to allow for adaptive reuse. In addition, the agreement now includes a reimbursement agreement, Exhibit F of the agreement. Specifically, there is now a backstop guarantee to the city for any unpaid deferred permit and parking fees should the restaurant cease operation. Even if a new tenant were secured or the building were to be sold, the city council would have to approve any continuation of the incentive agreement, and there would be no obligation to do so. The addition of the reimbursement agreement removes all risk for the city of non-payment of services and fees. Approval of the agreement as proposed will further efforts to maintain economic vitality by filling a vacancy along State Street, securing a substantial investment, bringing in a new business, enhancing the destination draw for Geneva, and helping to bridge an important connection between Third Street and State Street. This evening, I know we have Director Timoshenko here. In addition, I believe we also have the buyers and the broker for the seller are all here this evening, and certainly they may have information to add, or the council can ask any questions they may have of them.
With that, this matter is on the floor for discussion purposes. Council members either remotely, any questions or comments from Alderman Bruno or Marks? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said last time, and I still find it to be true, this gateway, we have so few options with incentives as non-home rule. There's really no risk here, and it's an important gateway property that could really help revitalize that 100 block of State Street, so I'm still very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Swanson?
So I'm looking at this in a, I tried to mention this last time, but maybe I wasn't clear. I'm looking at this in a very specific context. That context is our strategic planning. In particular, the strategic plan itself and the downtown master plan. In the strategic plan, since inception in 1997, each version of the plan has included a strong and vibrant downtown as being critical for Geneva's future. Our latest update, created in 2018, just two years ago, has a vision for economic vitality that calls for the city to stimulate strong and competitive business opportunities. To me, stimulate is an active verb, it's an action. It calls for us to do something to create a strong and competitive, to create strong and competitive business opportunities. Outcomes associated with this vision include increased sales tax revenue, continuing to attract new investment opportunities to the city, and increased square footage of total commercial and industrial space. Objective two of this vision calls for the thorough development of new commercial and industrial opportunities that add to the city's tax base. Now, how are we to stimulate opportunities? How are we to get this thorough development of new commercial and industrial opportunities? As Stephanie mentioned, as Alderman Bruno mentioned, we don't have a lot of tools available to us as a non-home rule community. The downtown master plan itself, the importance of our focus on a strong and vibrant downtown is such that in 2012, we established a strategic vision for the downtown area specifically. Goal two of the downtown master plan is entitled, strengthen the downtown role as a central business district. And objective three of this goal calls for the city to initiate programs, to initiate, again, to take action, to initiate programs to encourage the improvement and rehabilitation of older commercial structures in order to maintain a downtown building stock that can accommodate new business tenants and meet market demand. Again, our options for achieving this objective are limited. In 2015, we discussed establishing a business district, which the council showed some interest in but did not pursue. The economic incentive that we're discussing tonight involves one property or business directly, but results in a building that will be a modern asset for the entire downtown for decades to come. Regarding sales tax incentives themselves, okay, so we've mentioned before that there's not a whole lot of opportunities available to us. I want to be clear, though, that we're looking for tools that will help us achieve our own strategic goals. These are goals that we've set for ourselves. These are objectives that we are seeking to achieve, and the ways for us within our control to achieve them are very few, incentives such as this being one of the few. This is not something to be undertaken lightly. Stephanie mentioned at the outset that state law requires certain conditions to be met for it to even be considered. So it's not something that we're just going to be throwing around to anybody and everybody. In my mind, it's a tool to be used when the benefit of action outweighs the benefit of inaction. Our use of sales tax incentives up to this point has been successful. Back in September of 2018, we discussed this. At that time, we learned that applying a formula from the International Economic Development Council shows an average return on investment of our agreements to be $3.92. So we invest a dollar, we get $3.92 in return. We know there's a long list of successful restaurants in the downtown that are located at properties where we worked out incentives. In fact, I can count six that are located in properties that got sales tax incentives. So this is something that we've done before, this is something that's been successful in the past, and it's something I believe will be successful in this instance. This specific incentive, we have a successful business looking to locate in Geneva, looking to locate in Geneva in a time of a pandemic. Lot of the risk is on them. They're looking to make significant investment to adaptively reuse the building. Their investment, roughly 90% of the overall cost, along with our investment, roughly 10% of the overall cost, creates a downtown property capable of meeting the demands of many types of business, their type of business, but also types that may come later and come after. This investment is being done to a building that's been underutilized for the past several years, that criteria being the main criteria for a sales tax incentive to be even on the table at all. The downside risk, financial risk to the city, if the business doesn't succeed, we're in exactly the same place we are now. The building is generating little or nothing. If there's a long line of businesses waiting to purchase the property and willing to invest in its improvement without incentives, then we're probably out something, but I don't see that long line of businesses. I've heard that there's a possibility that this might draw business from existing restaurants. However, our experience to date with the similar incentives that we've done in the past show that this just is not happening. There's no evidence of this happening. In fact, there's evidence to the contrary. We've heard from businesses and economic consultants whenever we study the downtown of the challenge and problems that vacancies create. So I would say that inaction in this case is probably more harmful to our current businesses than action. I've also heard some concern about doing this in a pandemic. The only thing I have to say about that is, does anybody have any idea when the economic uncertainty associated with the pandemic is going to ease or end? I think we don't know that, but I think that the risk doesn't lie with us in this case. The risk lies with the people making the major investment in the building, looking to locate a viable business in Geneva. So for these reasons, but primarily for the fact that this is one of the few tools available to us to work on, actively work on, achieving our own strategic vision, achieving the objectives we've set for ourselves as recently as two years ago, I support this.
Thank you, Alderman Maladra. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Maladra makes some good points. I'm going to start out by saying I dined at the Bash Restaurant in Ottawa Saturday night, and it was very good. I was impressed, and it was crowded, and it was a draw, so it was meaningful for me to see it. I think that the restaurant would do well in Geneva. I opposed this incentive agreement two weeks ago and still do, and I mentioned the reasons that I did. Number one, I don't believe that the sales will completely be incremental. If it were, then of course, there's no risk to Geneva. If we're going to be getting 25 cents on dollars we wouldn't be getting, of course, it's wonderful. However, just anecdotally, for me to go out to dinner, if I go out once a week and I love sushi, if I go to have sushi, I'm not going to go to another Geneva restaurant. So they are in fact losing business. It is not 100% incremental, and I don't think I'm alone saying that. Number two, I don't believe that it's creating good quality jobs, which is what is in our economic incentive policy. It's mentioned 185 to 100 jobs making $20,000 a year. We should be evaluating the quality of the jobs as well. We should not be negatively impacting existing businesses. Alderman Maladra mentioned that, yes, with the cluster effect and creating a destination, perhaps that's going to be a win-win if we're increasing the pie for the dining out market. That would be great if it is in fact what's happening. However, we have a lot of sushi restaurants in the area, both in St. Charles and in South Elgin and Batavia. So it's not like it would be the only sushi restaurant in the tri-cities. So whether or not that's going to be a draw, increasing the total dining out pool, I don't know. And finally, I disagreed with the agreement because there was not a clawback provision. Thank you for adding the clawback provision. That's in our economic incentive policy. We should have a clawback position in all agreements that we place. So continuing on, the timing of providing incentives during the pandemic, of course, there's no right time. Of course, no one knows when it's going to end. We listed out all of the things we've done for existing businesses, which is wonderful. We did what we could. However, as you look at that list, and by the way, I have a business, and we were shut down for COVID, and it's expensive, and the items that are provided here didn't provide huge dollars to mitigate the damage that's done, suspending utility service connections, et cetera. That's, all of the things listed here are small dollars compared to giving someone a $500,000-plus incentive to open up. I also disagree with the city becoming involved in real estate transactions. We have a seller who is trying to sell a building to the buyers, and we're in effect creating a floor. Alderman Maladra said there's really no risk to this deal. The risk to me is that we're sending a message to the community, there's no need to maintain your buildings or invest in them, because if you can't sell it for the dollar you want, the city will step in and make up that difference. I find that to be a huge negative if in fact that is the message that we're sending. And finally, I did want to mention that I think process is important. It was mentioned that this deal today is different than the one that was defeated two weeks ago. I understand that, but it was mentioned two weeks ago that this is going to come back in front of us, and it just, the process didn't seem appropriate in my mind. So I continue to oppose this. I welcome the Bash Sushi House to Geneva if they do in fact come. I don't think that it's worth Geneva investing over a half million dollars at this point in time. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Kilberg?
In light of the fact that we have one council member absent and that we have a vacancy on the council, I think it would be appropriate that we table this item until we're at full strength. With that, I make a motion that we table this decision until Monday, September 14.
We don't have a meeting that date.
There's not a meeting scheduled that date, or on that date?
Monday the 14th?
No.
The motion to table is on the floor. Does the motion to table allow for discussion? It does. I would have respectfully appreciated a heads up on such a motion. We have now invited, and I hope this council defeats this motion resoundingly. We have yet again invited the prospective owners, the real estate representative, to a meeting and caught them off guard yet again. A phone call to me would have helped. I wouldn't have changed my opinion with respect to defeating the motion, but the reality is this, folks, the vacancy is the vacancy is the vacancy. Alderman Caven, on the other hand, informed myself, Stephanie Dawkins, and I believe one other person via email, that he had a pre-arranged commitment on the 17th. He's had this for months, months. I did not schedule this meeting knowing that he was going to be absent. In fact, he emailed us late last week to advise us of that. We cannot, and I don't believe we should, unless we've had previous discussions regarding whether or not someone is absent or someone has resigned, whether we should not conduct business. I implore the city council to vote down this motion to table. This is disrespectful to the property owners, this is disrespectful to the prospective business owners. Madam Recording Secretary, oh, Alderman?
Can we discuss this?
Of course.
I'm going to discuss why I'll be supporting the motion to table. We have an important issue before the council tonight, but it goes beyond Bash. The issue is how this council conducts business and more importantly, how this council is perceived by our community. At the very last city council meeting just two weeks ago, this council made the difficult decision that the proposed economic incentive package for Bash wasn't appropriate in the current economic environment. From our debate, it became clear that several factors were at play, including the time and size of the incentive package and the long-term effects of the proposed package on our existing restaurant community. Several members of the council were able to see past those objections and vote in favor of the incentives, but the majority were not. It was one of the rare occasions where the city council and city staff disagreed on the best path forward. But here we are again tonight for a do-over of basically the same package the majority of this council rejected just 14 days ago. Even more troubling was the implication that somehow this city council didn't understand the issue and was in need of an edification, had done a disservice to the downtown business community, which I partially represent. I did the math. The nine sitting aldermen here have a combined 59 years of experience on the council, so I'm fairly certain some institutional knowledge does reside on the wings of the dais if nothing else. I found the rationale for putting this item so quickly back on the agenda offensive. Two years ago, in July 2018, I was in the minority on providing incentives to State Street Coffee for the Dunkin' Donuts on East State Street. It was another close vote, six to four. I was suspect of Dunkin' Donuts fit for that parcel and its ability to deliver on the promise of neighborhood revitalization. I would have welcomed the opportunity to debate that issue again at the next meeting and the next meeting to reverse the vote, but that's not how we operate. As anyone who has enjoyed a cup of coffee or donut at that location in the intervening two years can attest, my concerns might have been well founded. As alderman, we regularly deal with contentious issues. It's part of the job. When I hear that residents understand, we take our responsibilities as council members seriously. We take into account the perspective of all relevant stakeholders and bring independent thinking to each vote. There will always be voices that accuse us of being a rubber stamp or making backroom deals. We've all heard that in one form or another. I'm concerned that tonight's re-introduction of this measure propels that notion. Reputations are hard to repair, and I do worry about the harm tonight's action could have when we debate the next controversial topic. As always, I respect the council's action and the will of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion to table? Alderman Ruby?
Just wanted to publicly comment that I was not aware that Alderman Caven wasn't going to be here tonight, and I don't know if Alderman Kilberg was or not, but I also found that offensive that you were upset that he didn't warn you. I mean, there was no, I didn't know that Alderman Caven wasn't going to be here, so I think you have to give him the benefit of the doubt.
No, 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 it wasn't about Alderman Caven not being here, it was about a desire to make a motion to table the matter.
Right, well, the-
Because I would have contacted, I would have contacted Cody and Chanel and perhaps Mr. Kirkwood and others to say, guess what?
Sure. So I just don't feel that a heads up about tabling the issue was necessarily a possibility.
Everything's a possibility. If, I mean, anyone here, and I said this last time too, I'm going to put Cody on the spot. When this vote changed, we all had, in the interest of full disclosure to address Alderman Burkhart's point of view and others, this city council and I, the economic development director Kathleen Timoshenko and city administrator Stephanie Dawkins, conducted what we intimately call Operation Noah's Ark, where we invite aldermen to join us two by two to discuss information that is generally speaking sensitive and could be injurious to parties relative to a discussion. Much of that discussion is often confidential. Much of the discussion we have before us tonight is obviously public, but some of the details surrounding this transaction is of course confidential. I shared with each and every council member that as Cody and Chanel left that meeting on August 3, the message to me was more or less, what happened? I could have, and the applicant could have, surveyed the council and asked each council member, please explain your vote. Of course, each council member has the right to say, I don't need to explain my vote, my vote is my vote. That's fine. The shock and awe from Cody and Chanel with respect to assurances from a vote just a week earlier, that it was likely the vote would probably continue along the straight or the same line with some objections, that's fine, was such that they said to me and asked me, we'd like to speak to the council. Well, guess what? The vote was already taken. I leaned over and asked the city attorney point blank, what options do we have? The option that is clear, which I explained on August 3, was we can bring back this incentive agreement, changed so that it's not the same, because it's not a vote to reconsider, despite some people in the community assuming such and putting in an email, despite that individual being patently wrong on virtually everything he ever writes. Two, that's what I did. That's why I announced out of courtesy that I was going to bring it back. I could have chosen, I guess, on the 3, not to announce under new business as a heads up, ladies and gentlemen, as a courtesy, we're going to bring this matter back and we're going to make some changes to it. That's why during Operation Noah's Ark, I asked all of you, are there changes you'd like to see perhaps? We never had any recommendations. So I don't want this to be between, you know, us as elected officials, but I will stand up anytime, anyplace, anywhere, and fight as hard for our number one strategic plan that has been number one for 20-plus years, to promote, to pursue, to preserve, and to ensure a strong and vital downtown. If I am guilty, then I am guilty of perhaps that passion. I believe this to my core, that this is the right thing to do. If we are against incentives on this council, then we have called to question our own integrity. If it were not for incentives, more than half the East State Street corridor would not exist today. If it were not for incentives, Dodson Place would not exist today. If it were not for incentives, the entire redevelopment of South Third Street on that first block, Old Chocolate Kitchen, et cetera, would not exist today. For our friends out west, the Geneva Commons would not exist today. We went so far as to demand incentives for the Geneva Commons that we actually pledged, as some of you may know, $100,000 a year from the sales tax revenue of the Commons for several years to market the downtown. Incredible. I think it worked out well. We all know for a fact that downtown Geneva from East Side Drive to Anderson Boulevard generates approximately $95 million a year in sales tax. The Geneva Commons generates approximately $98 million a year in sales tax. We're on parity. If it were not for incentives, there would be nothing. If it were not for incentives, there would be nothing on Randall Road. If it were not for incentives, there would be no Harrington Inn and Spa, let alone the restaurants there. There would be no Riverside receptions. If we believe as a council that any action we take might negatively impact an existing business, then we should let Kathleen go, let David de Group go, let our building department go, may as well get rid of Stephanie as well, because we have no business to conduct. If it were not for incentives, we would have never had Isabella's Restaurant, the second revolving door in the city of Geneva, which was paid for by incentives, which our friends Aurelio's, I would argue, is certainly benefiting from. If it were not for incentives, we would have no outdoor dining now, nor any outdoor dining continuing through the fall, if it were not for incentives. If it were not for incentives, ladies and gentlemen, this council would not have voted 10 to 1 to sell the land to the Burton Foundation. If it were not for incentives, this city would not have sold land to the Park District for $1 along the eastern shore of the Fox River. If it were not for incentives, we would not have donated the park, River Park, to the Park District for $1. We would have held it and seen it as an asset and control it, for whatever reason, who the hell knows? So, I respect everyone's opinion. If I have erred at all, I've erred on the side of passion for what I believe is right for the downtown. I am concerned that a message we send tonight, let alone to Cody and Chanel, let alone to Mr. Kirkwood, let alone to the property owner who lives in Geneva, is the following. Unless you come with cash in hand and big, big, big piles of cash behind it, we have no interest in working with you. The city is no longer your partner. We're here simply to send out utility bills, to enforce parking, and that's about it. So, good luck and Godspeed. We hope only the wealthy and the well-to-do will invest in our community, because we Madam Recording Secretary, take the roll.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Just for clarification, we're voting on the motion to table.
Alderman Marx, are you clear on the motion? The motion is the table?
Yes, I'm clear.
And you're voting in favor?
I support the economic incentives. I just think that it was such a close vote that, you know, at least all the ones that are sitting aldermen right now should be here.
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Five-three.
We'll take a brief recess, folks. Do not have a motion to adjourn, so would anybody like to say anything? Cody and Chanel, do you want to say anything? Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, first off, we would like just to say thank you. Thank you to Kathleen for all of her partnership and the time that she's put into this over the last year. We want to thank Charles. Thank you so much for your expertise. We appreciate your patience so much during this process. We want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to come back and giving us the opportunity to speak to you. We are very grateful and we appreciate it very much. Cody and I are regular people. We have been married for nine years, and we have a young family. We have a five, a three, and a one-year-old. We've known each other since grade school. We both graduated from Eastern Illinois University, and we moved back to Ottawa after graduation. After a year of working full-time jobs in our, within our degrees, we, and part-time jobs in the restaurant industry, we frequently discussed just wanting to do more. We saw an opportunity to bring something new to our community. More often than not, we are consistently asked, how did you come up with the idea for Burger and Sushi House? Living in a generation where social media is all the rage, we were shocked to see how many people were leaving our community, driving 35 miles plus to go and eat sushi somewhere else. They were then dining or going for drinks afterwards in another town. They were shopping beforehand in another town. We, at that point, we made up our minds and we were committed to opening a sushi restaurant in our small community of 18,000 people. We knew that we couldn't just open up any sushi restaurant. For as many people who love sushi, there was just as many skeptics. We needed to pair sushi with something that would bring everyone to the table. For us, that was American food with creative touches. BASH was officially opened in 2013 at our first location in Ottawa, and after five years of growth, we purchased a 7,000-square-foot furniture store to rehab. Since July 2018, it has been BASH's home. On any given night, as you walk through, as you, Alderman Swanson, may have noticed, you will find families celebrating yearly milestones, ladies out for girls' nights, high school kids having a night out, city rec softball teams, not anymore, but potentially sitting at the bar ordering, having a beverage, and couples of all ages enjoying date nights. BASH truly has something for everybody.
Chanel and I take pride in the fact that over the last seven years, we have built relationships with fellow business owners, created a work environment that feels like family, and established ourselves as giving members to our community. When the process to open a second location started back in early 2019, we were put in contact with realtors throughout the state to pinpoint where we wanted to expand to. We began collaborating with Charles and shared what we were looking for. We wanted to replicate our Ottawa location, which is small-town feel with big-city vibes. We spent a day hopping between seven different locations, from St. Charles to Vitavia, and lastly, Geneva. After looking at 124 West State Street, we knew immediately that that was the building and the town of Geneva needed to become our second home. We quickly fell in love with the large space and its endless possibilities, the unique small businesses that make up the downtown, and of course, the small-town feel with those big-city vibes. The process has been a long one. For the last year, we have hit roadblocks, most of which involve the requirements it would take to get that building to where it needs to be. We are standing here committed and hopeful, wanting to paint a picture of what saying yes to this incentive would mean for the city of Geneva over the next seven years, based off what we have done in Ottawa over the last seven. We want to collaborate with local farms to bring fresh and local items to the table, creating and adding specials from their products they carry to an already unique menu. We want to work with local breweries to offer their products and help promote their brand. We want to use local bakeries to show that just because a dessert is vegan doesn't mean it can't be great, too. We want to work with local marketing companies and print shops to help promote not just our brand, but the city of Geneva. During the next seven years, we want to employ hundreds, some of which will be relocating to the area. The process starts with the build-out and our use of a local contractor using local skilled labor. It consists of high school students greeting guests for their very first time at their very first job. It continues with the hiring of management and chefs who make a salary large enough to support their families, and it never ends with the reoccurring maintenance it takes to keep the industry running. During the next seven years, over $15 million will be spent in payroll alone. That is $15 million that will be used to support local restaurants, jewelers, ice cream parlors, and boutiques. It is $15 million that will go to pay rent, buy houses, pay mortgages, and even cover tax bills. That is $15 million that is going right back into the community. During the next seven years, we want to support young children, whether it is donating to their schools, the sponsoring of youth sports, or educational opportunities for those with special needs. We want to provide meals to hospitals, first responders, homeless shelters, and local governments. We want to join local organizations that give back to their communities and have a strong understanding that one is only as good as the community that surrounds them. During the next seven years, we want to accomplish all of this right here in Geneva.
Are we able to address something that's been brought up?
The floor is yours, yes.
Okay. We keep hearing that BASH does not provide quality jobs, that the average salary is $23,000, I think, and I think if you asked any of our 85 current employees if they considered their job a quality job, 100% would look you in the eye and tell you absolutely, and that it provides for them, their family. Did you have anything to add to that?
I think, you know, we were just taking the average of the $2 million annual payroll and dividing it by what's paid. A lot of those kids are high school students working part-time at their first job, making more than minimum wage. Some of those jobs are $50,000 to $100,000 jobs that can support a family, can pay rent, can buy a house, can be spent at other restaurants. So, that's just, the quality jobs thing is important to touch on, that there is jobs here that will be ongoing for years to come.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, if I address them?
Depending on the nature of the question, sure.
No, I wanted to say thank you. Thanks for coming. You have a very busy business. You have a very busy family life, and I know this is your second, third time here, and now we're asking you to come back in September. And I really appreciate it. I'm very glad that we got to hear from you tonight. I hope you know that 95% of the debate over here is not about BASH. It's not about you. It's about some economic disagreements. It's also probably a little bit of COVID panic among a lot of us that we're bringing to the table. I think emotions are really high tonight, and honestly, I think a month to sit on this might be good. So, I really do appreciate you coming, and I do thank you. I guess my only question is, do you feel like without this incentive, it just doesn't work? I think it's a big project, but you're saying without this incentive, it just, it just doesn't make sense. And the mayor can choose if they get to-
Oh, absolutely. Cody and Chanel, of course, join us if you'd like.
Yes, I mean, it's very hard to do it without this incentive, strictly just to get that building to where it needs to be, and I feel like this incentive would have to be there. And I guess I can't speak for the seller, but for anyone to want to purchase that building and do anything with it, it's a lot of work, but anything that is worth doing is worth doing right, and that comes with an expense. An expense that, as mentioned, will, it'll benefit the community for years to come, not just the building itself, but the jobs, the payroll. Money will continue to flow back into the community.
That answers my question. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkwood?
Hi, my name is Charles Kirkwood. I'm the real estate broker for both the seller and the buyer on this transaction. I just wanted to say a few things about the property itself. It is a challenging property. It does need modernization. It does need infrastructure improvements to be utilized in its highest potential. That all requires a very special buyer. Cody and Chanel are special buyers. They have the expertise. They have the financial wherewithal. They have the vision to bring something special to Geneva. I think that there's a matter of process here that needs to be taken into consideration, but from a practical perspective, if we take a pass on this, we're hoping that someone else steps up in the same capacity and that the stars align in the same way. I think that that's a very tall order with the economic times that we're seeing. I think they have the potential to bring something incredible to Geneva. I would ask that you consider the possibility of incremental gains as being real. I, for one, I mean, I heard it mentioned that, you know, if I want sushi, I can just go somewhere else and get it. I, for one, would rather stay in town, get it, and go to the ice cream shop or any other variety of stores in the area and spend my money here. Just a few thoughts that I had sitting here.
It's also worth noting, ladies and gentlemen, tuning in on the off-chance that you subscribe to the philosophy that a new restaurant, and for that matter, a new retailer, but let's just focus on restaurants. If a new restaurant opens in Geneva, that new restaurant cannibalizes the others. But what a lot of people might not know is that there are nine restaurateurs in Geneva that have opened up nine sister restaurants in Geneva. Ask any one of those restaurateurs if they chose to open their restaurant knowing that it would damage their original restaurant, and I guarantee you, they'll say, oh, of course not. Our customer base is just not 60134. It's all over Chicagoland and beyond. We've heard from Cody and Chanel. We've heard from Mr. Kirkwood. I would kindly ask, Alderman Kilberg?
A motion to table is not a defeat of this proposition, and with that, I'd move that we adjourn.
No, that's an out-of-order, because I was about to ask this. A motion to table this matter is a slap in the face to Cody and Chanel, to Mr. Kirkwood, and to this, in my humble opinion, this community. Alderman Ruby, I was not upset with the motion to table. I was upset, what I've just discovered, of course, is the motion to table was, I believe, and if I'm wrong, correct me, orchestrated prior to arrival tonight, otherwise we wouldn't have prepared speeches. So, I would kindly ask that those in the majority, those who voted to table this, you have heard from the prospective buyers and business owners, nobody doubts their passion and sincerity. There's only one person that I know of in this community that doubts their numbers, and that alone should say a lot. A motion to reconsider the motion to table would be appropriate. Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion reconsider.
Unfortunately, you're not able to. It would have to be somebody in the majority. Somebody in the majority, I would kindly ask to offer a motion to reconsider the motion to table this matter. We have a rare opportunity to do the right thing, because I will remind this council respectfully that later on in the agendas we have before us tonight, we are discussing, to a great extent, other incentives. If we are against incentives, then I would expect a unanimous no vote on those other matters this evening. One of those matters, of course, is the affordable housing. The other one is issues regarding overhead sewers, what have you. I just have a hard time comprehending that to be against incentives is only certain incentives, but not others. So, is there a motion to reconsider the matter?
It's not a motion. Mayor, with all due respect, you keep ratcheting the motion up here. I think we all agree that a month is not too much for this massive project that we're all struggling with. I'm struggling with it, but I'm not going to change my vote tonight.
Okay.
And I wrote this last week, when I was very upset about how it was handled two weeks ago, and I never got an answer about how this was reconsidered. Two minutes after that vote, you didn't know there was going to be a change in the package that came before us tonight, but yet we were being told that it was-
Two minutes before which vote?
After, two weeks ago, when two minutes after our vote, two weeks ago, you said we were going to reconsider this.
Right. No, I didn't say reconsider. We're bringing it back.
But you didn't know that there were changes to the agreement?
I knew there had to be changes to the agreement, or otherwise it couldn't be brought back.
So, you knew that there would be, these people would all agree to changes?
I had good faith that they would, yes. Not that I knew everything based on, but I also discussed with you, Alderman Burghart, I asked you point-blank in our Noah's Ark meeting last week, point-blank, is there something you might want to see that could?
And I said, let me think on it, and-
I also explained to you, though, the reason, based on Robert's Rules of Order, why I could bring this back, why anybody could bring this back.
So, I could have brought Dunkin' Donuts back two weeks-
Yes, in fact, August 3rd, you said to me, well, why can't we bring? I said, you can, simply ask. That's all. Simply ask. You and I had a discussion-
Could I get clarification from our attorney that I was on the losing end of the Dunkin' Donuts economic incentives, and I could have brought it back?
Sure.
I was on the losing side.
You were on the losing side?
Yeah.
And you could not, no.
Could I get some support up here? I don't, I don't understand what's happening. I'm like in Alice in Wonderland here, like, how is this back before us tonight?
Because it's a different agreement.
That wasn't known two weeks ago.
But I made the pledge that it would be a different agreement, and we've had people write to us saying all sorts of, it's a different agreement because we're, have an agreement now with Cody and Chanel for $150,000 commitment. That's a- That's a substantial difference.
But you didn't know that when you said two weeks ago it was going to be before us tonight. I support the table, because I think we need to, like...
But how, but how could I? How could I know it that night?
Craig, could you help me out here? Like, I'm talking in circles, and I...
All right, so do you mind? No, I do mind. Let me, let me try to clarify just for a second, then I'll give you the floor, Craig. Nobody in this, I don't think, in this council chamber was surprised by the vote on August 3rd, or, excuse me, nobody was not surprised, that's a double negative, forgive me. There was total shock in how that vote went. Our conversations in private are in private, but many of you said to me, to Kathleen, to Stephanie, that you too were surprised how it went. I knew first and foremost that in order to bring it back for consideration, not reconsider, just for a new thing, would have to change in some form or, that's why we asked the question. I had in the back of my mind one idea, actually, I had several ideas. The one was agreed to by Cody and Chanel, a substantial clawback of 150,000, that's why I did it, pure and simple.
But you didn't know that that night, you hadn't talked to them unless you somehow spirited them across the way into the back room.
I talked to them by phone when they were heading back to Ottawa.
In between our meeting.
Pardon me?
In between that meeting, from adjourning and new business.
No, of course not.
I give up, I'm not saying...
Everybody here has a right to bring back anything they so choose if it's new. But it's true.
So I would have had to get Dunkin' Donuts to reopen, to change their incentives, so I could have brought it back, so it was new. There's no way I could have done what you did two weeks ago, is what I'm saying. And I'm sorry I'm out of line, I'm very frustrated.
No, you're not out of line, you're not out of line.
I feel like I tried to follow process, and then process just blew up two weeks ago.
Okay, Alderman Burghart, the process didn't blow up, and now, I'll share with you my perspective. I don't think the process blew up, ladies and gentlemen, I think we intentionally exploded the process by encouraging these applicants to come back, to come back, to come back, and then to surprise the hell out of them with a change vote with very few comments, very few comments, and that's your prerogative. I, I, I get that. If in one month's time, the world changes so drastically, should I not also believe that those who don't support incentives now will not support incentives in one month? Or does the world change so beautifully that in fact, they do?
I changed my vote on Nash, because I listened to the story. I was moved by their story tonight, but this is not helping.
But, and that's where I failed, and I told you that. When Chanel and Cody said to me, we want to appeal to the council, they didn't have the right to that night. That's why I stated what I did out of passion. I'm going to bring this back under a new agreement, so you can hear from them yet again. We heard from them at the committee of the whole meeting. In fact, I believe it was you that asked them to comment on their business.
I did.
So, yeah, which is always very helpful.
And when we first talked about this in February, the world was still spinning on its axis, and about a month later, we are now in, you know, so...
No question, no question.
And we get to change our votes between committee and city council.
Of course you do.
Or why have it?
Absolutely, you do. That's not, I'm not questioning that. I just expressed my surprise for it.
I've had enough, thank you.
Is there a motion to reconsider the motion to table?
I think Chanel has it.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we have something on the table still.
Yep. Is there a motion to reconsider? Okay, Chanel?
I just want to say, I respect your, your due process of being able to do all this, but I do want to stress that this has been a, over a year-long process for us since we have started this, and the closing of this building was pending financing, which this incentive is a major, major part of. So we've already, you know, with COVID pushing things back, waiting another month for us is potentially a deal breaker, not only with us, but also the seller, who we are under contract with and have been pushing back our closing consistently pending this incentive, so I just would like to add that.
Mr. Kirkwood?
I just wanted to add to that a little bit. It has been a long haul on this, and after the last vote, I had a conversation with the seller, you know, we were all kind of dumbstruck, you know, what, what's happened here, you know, we thought this was of interest to the city, and the discussion we had was, well, you know, maybe we should focus more on leasing this building, I need to generate some cash flow. That building can't sit there vacant. I don't have another buyer with $3 million lined up to do something great with the property. Just wanted that to be under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkwood. Mr. Lieben?
I'm not representing the chamber tonight, only because we haven't taken a vote, so I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, but I want you to know the process over the years that we've gone through in dealing with some of these issues. I would think we could talk about three things. Number one, and the thing that concerns us most is large spaces downtown, particularly on State Street, and how long will they be there and be vacant? I mean, Good Sense Children is another one, that is such a large space that the opportunities don't often come along, and our concern is if we lose something that we have here, we've seen that happen with sometimes residential sales and people coming in and the deal gets thrown away, and then the land just sits there empty for years and years and years. So number one, we think that if we have an opportunity, and we love what the city's done in trying to make it viable for people by giving incentives, and as you've talked about, you've done that for many, many things. The second thing is that you're always going to have people that have restaurants or ice cream shops, and they have a vested interest, and they don't want to see anybody else come to town. But we think that the best thing that always happens in any chamber is, the more venues you have, the more people come, and you're known as a destination, and we know we have St. Charles over here vying for a big downtown space and big restaurant space, we know we have it, but they can give, even Batavia, give incentives because of where they are, and so they can work a lot of deals with people to get them in there and their businesses, and we've been somewhat restricted. It's nobody's fault, it's just the way the law goes and what happens. So that's important to us, and we think that on State Street and on Third Street, empty properties are not going to do us very well. This COVID is going to go on for a while, I mean, none of us are, I think we'll be lucky if next, and I can't predict, my crystal ball doesn't work, but probably if we could have Swedish days next June, we'll all be very, very happy, but the chances of that are, you know, who knows, who knows where we'll be. But a new business coming in, it's going to take them time to get up and running, and some of these buildings, because they're so old, they require a lot of work just to get a restaurant open, and you think of the capital that's needed for that, if there's no way to help it, then you just can't afford to do it, because you can't start making a profit. So I love what all you're talking about and what you're doing, but that's sort of been our thinking all along, is that we don't want to see empty buildings in downtown Geneva, because it just doesn't look good, and just the canopy over in Nobel House now makes that whole property and the whole street driving into downtown look good. So those, those are the issues as we see them. We're not concerned about other businesses. We've got a lot of ice cream places, if another one wants to open, then that's fine, too, because the more we have that are good businesses, the more people we're going to bring into town, and the more opportunities they have. A lot of people go out now, you go into the city, because there are a lot of restaurants in the city, and if you don't get into one, you can go to another one if people don't like to wait, and that's been what's nice here, too. But some of these small restaurants, they're going to struggle. We're very concerned about what's going to happen over these winter months with restaurants when they don't have the outdoor seating, and it's going to be, we're going to be in for a struggle yet from winter months and getting through to January, February, March, and start opening again, so appreciate everything you're doing. I just wanted to give you those thoughts that we've talked about over the years, and we sort of try and live by them in terms of making decisions, so thank you.
Kathleen, did you want to say something?
Sure, what I'd like to say is that, you know, this, this proposal was really a last resort to try to get this deal back together, because we did see the many positive impacts of it. This is an active economic development effort to try to close a gap and to try to provide for the adaptive reuse that's needed to ready the space for tomorrow's users and for the customers that want to come to Geneva and continue to come to Geneva. I think it's very important to recognize that in real estate, a very common phrase is "time kills deals," and when there's time spans, you know, people reconsider things, other opportunities come up, these things are extremely delicate, it is very delicate, it is very hard to find the person A and the person B that wants to purchase and do something at a property and a willing seller, and when you do, and you're able to push them and push them and push them together, as we did to get so close, it is important to try to not interrupt that and to get in the way of that, and time has a threat toward this deal. The other issue is predictability for investors and developers, this is extremely important. When people spend a year looking at a property and putting all types of time and money and delays in their expansion plan because they're trying to do something, they expect that there's a certain level of predictability, that, that if they do things right and they do things within the way that things have been done in the past. It has been talked about a few times here tonight, but the city really has been built on these types of agreements. I was contacted by a large property owner this morning who wanted to applaud this idea and talk about how his property was a benefactor of the exact type of deal, and I think that there's recognition amongst investors that if there can be some assistance provided from the municipality, that the municipality will want to do that, because, believe me, municipalities are doing this all over, all over in our competing communities. A lot of people wish that they could be in the position of Geneva with having high demand. I think that it's important for us to push those things forward and not to prevent them. So I would encourage you to not continue to postpone, because things definitely could change, and, you know, looking in the, in the rearview mirror, I don't know what we'll see. Thank you.
Alderman Burghart, if I may, I'm going to try to rephrase my statement, and forgive me for not being articulate enough earlier. You're absolutely right, I had no idea how I could change this incentive agreement the night I announced it was going to come back this evening. But I did reach out to Cody and Chanel, which I think any decent, correction, which I think was, was my responsibility to do so, to let them know that I am going to work with Kathleen to try to fashion a new incentive agreement that you could agree to. If you can't agree with that, I will not put this on the agenda, pure and simple. So requiring or asking kindly for Cody and Chanel to consider the parking amendment, as it were, they did, and that's why it was brought forward. But you're absolutely right, I had absolutely no clue, but I knew it had to be changed in some form or fashion, and I think that was a fairly material change. But I think that became my responsibility by pledging and giving everyone the heads-up that I'd bring it back, it, that burden, if you will, fell on my shoulders to make it different enough that would answer, I think, some of the questions with, because what I heard was, you know, the total dollar amount seemed to be a little bit uncomfortable, so let's do this clawback for 150, what have you. They agreed, let's move it forward, hence Noah's Ark, all that good stuff, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much. Got to tamp down my Irish when I tend to, so... Are those who voted in the majority 100% committed, based on what we've heard from Chanel and Cody and Mr. Kirkwood, Kathleen and Mr. Lieben, that when we talk about risk, the risk has now gotten exponentially higher, that if we postpone this for over a month, we could lose the deal? Alderman Marx?
My, my, here is, I'm not against, you know that, Kevin. It's just it was such a close vote last week, that without having at least all the aldermen sitting there is what's causing me some concern. I, I mean, I'm going to vote yes for this incentive, I've made up my mind, I know that. I feel comfortable with it, it's just, it was such a close vote last week, I just have a, I did not know Gabe was not going to be here tonight. If I did, I would have probably called you ahead of time and asked you to postpone it, but I was not aware of that. I wasn't aware of it until we took, until we took, you know, the roll call tonight. So that's my, that's the only thing, reason why I'm going out. I mean, you know, if it makes it easier to go to Monday, September 8th, I'm fine with that. I just think that the vote was just too close to just have it where at least all the sitting aldermen that are currently seated are not, are not present for some vote like this, because it was just way too close last week. That's the only reason I voted for the tabling.
Do you believe that within a month's time, you'll have an opportunity to vote on this again, or do you believe, based on what you've heard tonight, that this could all expire?
I am struggling with that right now, I can tell you that, Mayor.
I am.
I am, you probably saw that on my face, you probably saw that on my face. I mean, that is, that is, hearing that, it is causing me to rethink that right now. But, you know, I, I'm struggling with it, Mayor. I mean, would, would, would September 8th make it better?
Well, let me ask, let me ask you this, Alderman. If September 8th is a concurrence of, or consensus of this body here tonight, which would require from the motioner and the seconder, unless you wanted to make a separate motion, I guess, but you can't amend a motion to table, can you? No, you cannot. So keep in mind, Mr., or, excuse me, Alderman Marx, that we will have a new council member on September 8th, and we will then again have the opportunity to say to that new council member, we know you don't know a hell of a lot about this, but how do you vote? And of course, that council member, I would assume, would say, I, you know, recuse, or abstain, or whatever, that'd be a, we put Alderman Cavan in the position of a swingboat, much to his probably dismay, and we run the risk of putting the new alderman in a swingboat as well, which we probably shouldn't do.
No, we probably shouldn't do that, I agree with you on that. I'm, I'm finished speaking right now, Mayor.
Alderman Malodra, Alderman McGowan?
So actually, my comments are for the applicants. I feel like I have to apologize for this, it's embarrassing. We don't usually do business this way, so I have to ask your patience and ask you for an honest answer to a question when perhaps you didn't get a whole lot of honesty in the past several meetings. The risk of your financing falling through, is it, is it probable, or is it at all possible for you to hang with us? This will work itself out, I don't know how it's going to turn out, but I do know that this council will get its act together. act together, explain its positions, why it's in favor or why it's against, and we will get back to doing business the way we usually do. If I were to beg your indulgence and patience, could you last until this comes back before us?
Part of the loan is SBA, and documents do expire, as well as the patience of the seller. And we've known that for a while because this has been a year. How he's lasted this long with us is beyond me. And the deal is written not just not financing, but it is reliant on city incentive. In Ottawa, we had, you know, a TIF and facade program, stuff that wasn't offered here that is helpful. It's helpful to any business coming in, looking to make a large investment. But there is SBA documents. They will expire, and it sounds like, you know, maybe we have a little more patience than the seller as well on this. But it's out of our control. He can as well back out and say, "Let's lease it to somebody," and a year's work, gone.
So?
Mr. Kirkwood? I'd just like to make one statement on behalf of the seller. It is a financial struggle for him to maintain the building. There's no rent coming in right now. He has endured this process for a long time. It's putting a lot of financial pressure on, would on anyone. There's a tax bill, a significant tax bill there. There's no tenants in the building. Again, to consider what Cody and Chanel can do with this building in comparison, you know, if we move towards leasing the building, the first tenant that goes in there blows this deal. If I have someone that comes next week and says, "I want to put a resale shop in there," and it brings income to the seller, that's a significant factor for him to think about. And then the building remains as its lowest common denominator, and we've just lost a chance to turn it to its highest and best potential.
No, it's all yours. Take your time.
Well, I'll just pick up the thread that I started with, with the applicant. I do find this embarrassing. I was asked earlier in the week if I was comfortable with the way this has played out, and I'm actually not comfortable. I'm not comfortable with how a 6-2 vote flips to 4-5 with no explanation. I know that we can't change our votes. I know that we have changed our votes, but I can usually walk away saying, "I don't agree with it, but I know why it happened." But you can count me in the category of the people who were surprised the last time we talked about this. And so I found that discomforting. I'm with Tara. I don't understand exactly how this came back, but it did come back. Do I feel like it was within the bounds of what can be done? Absolutely. Do I feel it was in the bounds of what should be done? I think that it's as likely that this should have been done as any machinations between the Committee of the Whole and the City Council meeting that took place that turned a vote from 6 to 2 to 4 to 5. When we start talking about "should," it gets to be sort of slippery. But what I will say is, whatever we do tonight, our reputation as an entity to do business with in good faith is damaged. I asked these people if they're willing to delay just a month. It's not such a big deal. It's just a month. And I got to believe, financing concerns aside, that if we had showed similar good faith, that we would have received good faith in return. So I kind of think that we should be done with this and move on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that at the July 20th Committee of the Whole meeting, less than a month ago, I was absent. Honestly, my life is a blur sometimes. I can't remember if I was sick that night or traveling, but I wasn't there. However, I would have voted in favor of this, so therefore, the vote would have been 7 to 2, which, you know, but even at 6 to 2 in favor of the incentive plan, the proposed incentive plan, that very clearly shows the will of the council being in favor. And as has been mentioned several times already this evening, that vote flipped and the motion failed at the City Council meeting, 5 to 4. However, I wanted to know more about this myself. I didn't know why it had flipped. I wasn't present at the Committee of the Whole meeting. So I contacted our Economic Development Director, Kathleen Tomachenko. I met with her on Friday, August 8th. Even prior to me meeting with her when I set up the meeting, I said, "Kathleen, what other aldermen have contacted you between the Committee of the Whole meeting on July 20th till now?" She said, "Nobody." I was the only member of the City Council to contact her regarding this issue, to ask for follow-up, ask for clarification, whatever, just to talk about it, discuss, et cetera. That is, you know, the words troubling and concerned have been mentioned regarding this matter this evening. And I find it troubling and concerning that of the five City Council members that voted "no" to the financial incentive plan, not one of them, not one of them contacted Kathleen. All of our city staff are available to us for questions, to meet. They are all amazingly wonderful at, you know, fitting us into their schedules, sometimes at very short notice. So there's no reason why nobody could have contacted her. I don't know what type of conversations were taking place, either privately or maybe collectively among the City Council members who are now in opposition, many of whom were just, like I said, less than a month ago, in favor. But I feel that to make a decision like that, or to change your vote in somewhat of a void, is disingenuous, and it's not really the best, like, way of proceeding, especially when we're here voting, or sorry, yeah, we're voting and we're representing the constituents in our ward. I just really feel that, you know, if you're, like I've said, if you're going to vote "no" and you're not going to change your vote, at least make a fully informed decision one way or the other, so that you can go back to the people who you represent and explain to them. And in good faith, say that, "Yes, I met with staff. I either, you know, I found out some new information that changed my mind, or I found out some, the same information that like solidified my vote." But seek that clarification. I'm not sure, it's just a mystery to myself and I think others, how all of those votes changed in such a short amount of time. Furthermore, because I am a curious individual, I contacted the five aldermen on this council who had voted "no." I asked each one of them very politely, "Can you please explain to me how your no vote directly supports the goals and objectives in the recently updated strategic plan that we all unanimously approved less than a year ago?" I did not get a single direct answer to my question. I'm still waiting. So I really feel like, I'm really, I'm very glad that we have this opportunity to reconsider this vote this evening. This is a difficult time, obviously, because of coronavirus, but we can't feel afraid to move forward and make a decision. What the city needs during a time of crisis is leadership to move forward and not stall and, "Oh, I don't know if this is right." I mean, you've got to overcome, we've all got to overcome those reactions and not let any type of anger or animosity towards any one particular person, or not a person, any particular action by any person, whether it's the mayor or someone else on this council or anyone else, kind of get in the way of doing what's in the best interest for the city. And that is what we're here on the City Council for. So as far as, you know, whether we've gone about this in the right way or not, I feel that the council should have talked to staff before changing their vote, and I know for a fact that they did not talk to staff. Lastly, I just want to mention, the issue of trust is really playing in my head right now because for more than half of our City Council to hear what Director Tomachenko is telling us, she's presented this, she's worked on this matter for at least a year. Her salary comes out of tax dollars that the city revenue, that the city generates through sales tax, through property tax. But why would our director bring forth an opportunity and basically tell us that this would be outstanding for the city if she wasn't convinced that it would be a great idea financially, even during coronavirus? So when over half of the City Council votes "no," and that's our prerogative, we can vote yes or no to anything, it's our prerogative. But when over half of us vote "no," I feel that there's a trust issue. Why aren't we trusting, to some, to a greater extent, our Economic Development Director? So that's something else that I'm just kind of baffled by at this point. Going back four years, many of us, myself included, were running because there was such a high level of distrust of city staff on that current City Council. And we didn't feel that, because I remember having conversations with individuals that are sitting here in this room tonight, we didn't feel that that was healthy for the city. And we trusted the staff. And that doesn't mean, you know, turn a blind eye, don't look at anything they do. Of course, look at, you know, consider, discuss, look what they're doing. But I feel that it's unfortunate that there's a little bit of that sentiment that's kind of returned now, that we're not trusting staff, that this individual, Kathleen, who's a longtime professional in this field, that we are not giving as much credence to what she's saying as should be given. So those are just some things I hope that everyone will take into consideration. I'm still kind of confused by a lot of it. I've got the strategic plan 2025 in front of me. It's very short and it's concise by design. It makes very clear the financial goals, action items for the city, and to me, approving these financial incentives and encouraging this, you know, revitalization in the downtown area, reutilizing an older building, encouraging, you know, economic development, expanding the tax base, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all very specifically stated in the strategic plan. So it's a mystery to me why some on this council don't see that. And when I invited them to please explain to me why, I didn't hear back from anyone. So that's all.
That's not true. I responded to you, Jean.
But not directly. I, yes, you did, Alderman Kildare. You did respond to me.
We'll clarify that then, would you please?
Well, you did not give me a direct response to my question. I said, "Can you please explain, or explain to me how a no vote..."
First of all, you said, "I did respond and I did respond."
You just interrupted.
Would you please clarify that?
If you'll let me explain without interrupting me, I'd be happy to. You responded, but your response was not a direct answer to my question. You did not directly tell me how a no vote supports the goals and objectives in the recently adapted strategic plan. If you'd like to explain to me now, I'd be happy to listen. But that is all. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I am very disappointed. I'm getting a lot of feedback. So I am disappointed. I'm not begrudging one their vote. I think I understand the logic and some other logic. I've been in front of enough of these types of presentations to recognize that I think this is a legitimate risk. I know enough about the property. I know about enough about the needs of this property that this could put the seller in a desperate situation. If that desperate situation means, as was mentioned, a resale shop, I think we've really lost out here. The whole process here has made me feel, as it has with other types of developments, the city's not always a reliable partner. I think it is important that we consider this. We have a tremendous track record with these types of incentives. I would hope that this motion to table would be reconsidered, and I hope that this incentive would find support on the council.
Alderman Berger?
You know, I was a no vote at Cal. I was a no vote at City Council. I've had several of these economic incentives before me. I didn't feel like I needed to meet with Kathleen. I certainly respect her opinion, her knowledge, her hard work. Just yesterday, I heard raves about her that I was going to send her an email about. That's why I didn't meet with her. I feel compelled to defend my three fellow aldermen who had the audacity to change their vote between the Cal and the City Council. If I'm a conspiracy theorist, I'm having fun tonight. There are machinizations, I can't even say it, between the Cal and the City Council. How about three people just happened to change their votes? And maybe they were on the line at Cal and decided to move it forward? Maybe they talked to a few restaurant owners who aren't wild about this. I've talked to a few. Maybe they heard the study that a third of restaurants are going to go out of business because of COVID. Maybe they decided this isn't the right bet to take. Maybe about six things I can think of that could have caused those three to change their To act like there was some kind of conspiracy or some kind of foul play behind the scenes, I'm emotional because I think we all know each other, and we know we're good people who do a good job and do our homework and come here every Monday night. And for any of us to act like there's some kind of ill will or some kind of conspiracy or some kind of, it just, I don't know, I can't believe, what time is it? What, we're still at the, I just am like, I can't believe this is down the rabbit hole we've come, that we're accusing each other of somehow having some kind of cabal behind the scenes to, what, am I getting a kickback from GME or something? No. Like, I voted my conscience, my fellow aldermen voted their conscience. We are missing an alderman because he resigned because of the stress of this job, and it was 5-4. End of story. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to say for sure there were machinations, but I do believe that we're expressing the fact that this was brought back for reconsideration looked like there were backroom machinations going on.
I'm saying the mayor wasn't following the process that the rest of us have to follow. I wasn't acting like...
I do believe you said the words "backroom." I'm almost positive.
I said that people accuse of us of making backroom deals, and this kind of thing makes people...
Okay, so my point was, my point was...
Sorry.
That a flip from 6 to 2 to 5 to 4 with no explanation is as suspect-looking as anything else that came up. To me, they both are embarrassing. I did not mean to say that...
So each of us every week has to say, "I'm voting yes," because...
No, you're not. Tara, 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 I did not accuse you of machinations. I did not accuse you of doing anything in the backroom. I was attempting to draw a parallel. I was attempting to draw a parallel. If one smells, the other one smells. That's all I was saying.
Let me add this in the spirit of hopefully continuing this conversation. Let me add this in the spirit of hopefully continuing this conversation. On July the 20th, when this matter first came to the Committee of the Whole, there was no concern expressed by anybody on this council that we had a vacancy on the council and that perhaps we should wait until we have a full council to consider it. Nor did anyone express concern that Alderman McGowan wasn't present and that we should wait till she returns before we consider this. So I believe what we've heard tonight from Cody and Chanel and Mr. Kirkwood is this, that unless there's a motion to reconsider the tabling of this matter, then we can say goodbye to this opportunity and then we can spend, in my humble opinion, the weeks and months and perhaps years ahead reconstructing, as Alderman Maladra stated, perhaps our fidelity to a strategic plan that we just adopted in uniformity and unanimously a year ago. Because perhaps no longer does the success of a downtown or partnership with businesses really mean what we think it means. Alderman Swanson?
I think that's a disingenuous way of putting that. You're saying that none of us agree with the strategic plan. We are looking out for the taxpayers of Geneva as well. And the same thing with what Maladra said about that we now no longer have a partnership with the business community. We also have a partnership and a responsibility and a fiduciary duty to our taxpayers. And if we're looking out for that, that should override a lot of the things we do. According to McGowan, we should do whatever is in our strategic plan. Who cares how much it costs? And I disagree with that. We're all for public safety or pedestrian safety. We're not going out and spending $3 million on signs because we should. No, it's within our budgetary constraints. So I think there's another way of looking at it. And to broad-brush it the way you did, I think is disingenuous and insults us.
I accept the criticism. Let me rephrase that. All of you on this council, I believe, have agreed to, and Alderman Swanson in particular, that there is no check being cut to this prospective new buyer. But it's a performance bond in essence. As they do well, we do well. We can all agree to that. So to assume that we are somehow placing risk on the shoulders of our taxpayers is equally disingenuous, in my humble opinion.
That's assuming everything is incremental, which I've pointed out on multiple occasions.
Regarding the incremental, Kathleen has cited statistics to us that prove that a new business is not sucking business from the old one. Also, the 3.92 ROI as applied by standard international formula would indicate that the drain that you refer to, show me the numbers and I'll agree it exists. But we've seen numbers that say it doesn't exist. It's an emotional reaction as opposed to looking at the numbers.
When that ROI number was presented to us, I specifically asked, does that include, does it break out incremental versus non-incremental? And I believe Kathleen said, no, it does not. There was no way to do so.
She did not. But she also said that every new business has expanded the category that it's in. In our downtown, the restaurant industry grows even with new business coming in. So those new businesses, if they're likely to suck off from an old business, are going to do that with or without incentives. And so far, that hasn't manifested itself.
And I'm just saying, 100% will not be incremental. And I gave anecdotal evidence of that with respect to myself.
Kathleen, but I just need to ask one clar-, so the only way, and correct me because I know you will, an incentive will only work as long as 100% of it is incremental or non-incremental?
I'm not saying, I'm saying the numbers that were presented to us
were 100% incremental, and I'm saying that is not true. It's not going to be that way. No, it will work, but it will be substantially reduced.
In your opinion?
In my opinion.
Well, to that point, that's why 100% of the new tax from this business is not being rebated. It is only 75% of the 1%. You're still retaining 25% of the 1% of municipal tax and 100% of the non-home rule tax. So you're not giving all the new tax away. So if you're worried about the incremental, you're not giving that away. So just to speak to Alderman Maladra's point, we did test this theory. What we looked at, starting in 2018 all the way till present, is we looked at when a new business would open, what would happen to the surrounding businesses. So we chose things like, okay, a new Italian restaurant opened. We already have four or five Italian restaurants. What happened? Did we see a drain from those existing businesses to that new one? We've never seen that. We've looked at several different categories. We looked at a new specialty food store. We looked at new Mexican restaurants. We looked at new cupcake shops. We even looked at it in the reverse. When a jewelry store closed, we thought, well, this means that other jewelry stores' sales tax will go up. We did not see that. So we have continued to see a growth in restaurant sales, irregardless of the new build-outs that have been completed in the five-year period, brand-new turnkey restaurants, like what this couple is proposing to do at 124, brand-new restaurant. We also saw licenses go up every year, the number of licensed restaurants. And while that's happening, congruently, our tax from restaurants continues to grow. So we do not see a depletion. We are seeing growth. And because we're seeing growth, we would like to continue to build this sector of our economy. And it is especially important in the downtown because as we see, certain types of restaurants are going out of fashion. And those are the middle-market restaurants that are chains. And this is something that is happening nationwide. And that is why you've seen some of the closures of the national chains up at the Commons and other ones in trouble. There was just another one of the restaurant groups that's present at the Commons that just went into bankruptcy. The future of restaurants and areas like our downtown is the independent restaurants and destination-orientation businesses. We're looking to try to attract more destination restaurants, more experiential retail establishments. And our present stock of buildings does not accommodate that. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to help spur the economy and take an action verb and trying to be participatory to move these properties into conditions so that they can be ready to attribute to the downtown. We're trying to strengthen and grow the downtown. I think the majority of the property owners and the businesses would agree that filling vacancies and moving a property from disinvestment toward investment
Alderman, move your alderman's.
I will just publicly share what I shared with staff since there's so much conversation about the flipped votes. Truthfully, I flipped my vote at the COW, not at the council meeting. My gut was to vote against it. I love the concept. I hope that there is a way for it to work for you. I think it sounds great, but the $500,000 was just too much for me. I planned on voting against it at the COW and I fell into the emotions of the meeting and got swept up in changing my vote. So I didn't change, I didn't, I did flip my vote, but really, all I did was go back to my gut, what I intended to vote initially. It wasn't a conspiracy. I didn't know anybody else was changing their vote. I was honestly as shocked as everyone else in the room. I had no idea anyone else was changing their vote. So I just wanted to publicly state that, that there's no monkey business going on there. Tonight, this meeting, I think, has been just one insult after another at many of us for the statement that if I am not in favor of this, that I certainly can't be in favor of affordable housing, I find very offensive. And I just, like Alderman Burkhardt was saying, I think emotions are high. Alderman Kilburg tried to call this meeting over an hour ago and here we are still talking in circles. And in my opinion, this is dragging out because no one has said what you want to hear yet. And I appreciate your passion, but it puts us in an awkward position. It feels incredibly unprofessional to me and it's an embarrassment to me to be in this situation. And it's very frustrating.
Thank you. Alderman Marks?
I did not have any comment.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Well, I just want to state, you know, I harbor no ill will towards anyone on this council. I think this is a good, like, healthy debate and I appreciate everything that's been said. So I do want to mention, just anecdotally, that two Friday evenings ago, I was outside of Swordfish Restaurant in Batavia because I was going to Hobby Lobby and I noticed that the parking lot was full. So just for fun, I called Swordfish and I said, hello, what is, this is around 7:15 PM. I said, hi, is there a wait right now for a party of four? And they said, oh, it's going to be at least 30 minutes. Okay, so, and this is, you know, during coronavirus. This restaurant is, you know, doing full business. Yes, it was a Friday night, but still, Batavia was making money that night from the sale of sushi. Also, within the last month, my family and I decided we wanted to go out to dinner for sushi. This is before I contacted the Swordfish. So we go to Naperville because that's the place that we go to, a place right on the river that has sushi. And we knew they did not take reservations. So we said, okay, let's get there early. We got there at about 5:15 PM. And this was a weeknight. And when we got there, I was informed that there'd be a 75-minute wait for a table. And I invite anyone to call these other sushi restaurants in the other towns to verify this. Ask them, hey, is there a wait? How much, how long is the wait? You're going to hear that they're doing good business. So we had a 75-minute wait. My husband was not happy about that because I told him there'd be, you know. So we parked, we walked down the block. We had some appetizers and drinks at a different restaurant, giving them money, giving their waitstaff a tip, et cetera, paying taxes there. Finally, the buzzer went off. We walked back to the sushi restaurant in Naperville. We had our dinner there. And so, again, these places are making a lot of money, supporting their local towns. So anyone living in Geneva is going and spending their dollars outside of Geneva for sushi. And if you've all had the opportunity to either dine at the Bash location in Ottawa or to view their menu online, as I did. I have not been to Ottawa recently. I'd love to go because I really love Starved Rock and the whole area. So it's an extensive sushi menu. If you've seen any of the, their social media outlets, you can see, it's like a fancy sushi place with the trays. They accommodate large groups, large gatherings. They're planning event space. I'm going off on a tangent, but my point is that annually, all of the people that go for sushi are not able to find anything in the downtown area of Geneva. There's a Juran on Randall Road. It's great for our Randall Road corridor. But it would be great to have something in our downtown as well. This location is east of Third Street. It's not east of the river, but it's at least heading in the general direction. We do want to revitalize our East State Street corridor. It's in walking distance of the river, so that's been an issue with Geneva. People come for dinner, but we don't have a big theater. We don't have any kind of like big outdoor venue. So you can walk up and down and get ice cream or what have you after dinner. But with the location of this restaurant coming in, you are equidistant almost from the river to Third Street. You could do a nice loop, go through Island Park, go across the bridge, walk back. I mean, it just checks off every single, like, thing for me as far as what would be like a great business to have there to revitalize the downtown in that section as you're driving into Geneva from the east. Right now, it's a vacant storefront and an empty parking lot right there, I guess, on this, in this city block that we're all sitting in this evening. With the library having moved to the new location, this block, this area is going to be a lot quieter. It's already very quiet. And how much longer would the city like for the building to remain vacant and to be bringing in no tax dollars? If another fitness studio wants to move in, that's great. There's no municipal sales tax on a fitness studio. If a, you know what, there's no Chase, there's no Chase Bank in Geneva. I miss when the Walgreens had Chase ATMs because it was convenient. Now I have to go to St. Charles. A place like Chase, they've got a ton of money, obviously. They could move in, they put a drive-through. That's great for Chase customers. And I'm just using them as an example, but we're not going to get any municipal sales tax from that. And they would be closed all weekend and every evening. So it would just be dead. So I just wanted to say for, you know, I disagree with the sentiment that this would not be bringing in taxes to the city. Not only would it be bringing in revenue that we are not realizing now, it would increase foot traffic. It would totally increase the overall desirability of Geneva and increase and protect our status as a destination and totally support the Geneva brand. So I'm baffled by this. That is all. Thank you.
Mr. Kirkwood?
Sorry, I know this has gone on quite a long time. Everyone's very passionate about this, obviously. I just wanted to make one comment about real estate in general. Time is of the essence in real estate. Kathleen made the point that things go sideways. Things change. Right now, Cody and Chanel are approved for a significant loan to do this project. Their loan docs are expiring. Their financing is with the SBA. The SBA is, I mean, how much money is the SBA throwing out right now? They have the money earmarked for Cody and Chanel right now. Their loan docs expire. There's no guarantee that they're going to be able to procure financing moving forward. So something to consider. Thank you.
Can we have a recess? Is it a recess?
Absolutely.
A five-minute recess?
Absolutely. Without objection, five-minute recess. Without objection, folks, the recess is concluded. We're back in session. I do want to share with the council some information I've been provided during the recess. And that is this, that, as we all know, the financing is, to say the least, precarious. It is unlikely that the applicants can last, I shouldn't say last, excuse me, can defer anything further to a future date. Alderman?
For the good of the council and to demonstrate my belief in the integrity of this council, I'd like to reconsider my motion to table tonight's vote.
Is there a second? Alderman Ruby, thank you. On the motion to reconsider, the motion to table, a simple majority does the trick. Any questions or comments regarding that motion and second?
Can you explain what an "I" and a "nae" mean?
An "I" would be to actually reconsider the motion to table to September 24th, as stated by Alderman Kilburg. A "nae" would be to stay that tabling. An "I" vote would be to rescind the motion to table. A "nae" vote would be to stay that motion. A "nay" vote would be to stay that motion or to uphold that motion. Any questions or comments regarding the motion that's on the floor by Berghardt and Ruby? Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Eight, zero.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney here with respect to the next statement I should make.
Well, it's up to you. The motion to table has been concluded, so the matter is still before this committee of the whole.
Okay. The matter with respect to...
So we're back to the original?
We're back to the original motion, folks, which was... Forgive me.
McGowan and Maladra.
Offered by Alderman McGowan, seconded by Alderman Maladra, which is item three on the special committee of the whole meeting agenda this evening.
Can I call the question?
You may.
I call the question.
Question's been called. No need for a second. Just a roll call vote, no debate. Madam Recording Secretary?
Okay. Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg? Maladra? Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson? Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Nay.
What is the vote total, Ms. Dawkins?
Four to four.
Four to four. It should come as no surprise that I will vote aye. This matter advances to the city council meeting.
So that's just the... Okay. Gotcha, never mind.
This matter advances to the city council meeting this evening. This committee of the whole meeting is concluded. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Swanson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Alderman Swanson?
I have the original motion.
It was not recognized. We're adjourned, folks. Without delay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to call this city council meeting to order. I kindly ask our recording secretary to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Berghardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan? Kilburg?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marks?
Marks, here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Cody and Chanel to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Any new business or public comment from anyone joining us this evening? Anyone from the dais? Item four, public hearings, special items and presentations. Consider joint proclamation naming the tri-cities as a dementia-friendly community. You should all have in your packet a copy of this proclamation, and I should give credit where credit is due with respect to some of your colleagues on the council, former colleagues as well, who helped spearhead this effort from its inception to where we are today. St. Charles, Batavia, and Geneva are proud to pursue this honor, and we're doing so in tandem this evening. Is there a motion to so approve?
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman Swanson, seconded by, I heard a voice from beyond, Alderman Bruno? All in favor, please say aye. We're going to do a roll call, that's what I meant. Roll call, please.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero no votes, and one absent. Item five, amendments to the agenda. I believe we do have one amendment. Alderman Swanson?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 12F from the consent agenda, please.
F as in Frank?
Right.
Anyone else? Item six is to approve the omnibus agenda as amended. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there a motion? Alderman McGowan? Alderman Ruby? Whenever you're ready, Stephanie. This, again, is the omnibus agenda with item F removed.
Okay. Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero "nay" votes, and one absent. We jump to item number... Good Lord, look at that. Number 11, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our recording secretary to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $4,265,230.92.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packets on the city website.
Thank you, Alderman Bruno, who made the motion to approve as presented. Is there a second? Alderman Berghardt makes the second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Swanson, or Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
We'd like to take a recess to see if Bruno's okay. Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero "nay" votes, and one absent. Committee of the whole, items of business, folks. Item 12A, consider resolution 2020-48, authorizing execution of development economic incentive and reimbursement agreement between the City of Geneva and Industry House LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno? Second, oh, it was Marks, excuse me. Alderman Marks, and Alderman Maladra made the second. Questions or comments? Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra? Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay, and congratulations.
Five-three.
Motion passes, item 12A, with five affirmative votes, three "nay" votes, and one absent. Item 12B, consider resolution number 2020-49, authorizing the execution of a change order, number one, with WBK Engineering LLC in the amount of $9,040, increasing the overall contract amount to the not-to-exceed amount of $287,967.34 for the 2020 citywide watershed study. Motion by Berghardt, thank you, seconded by Ruby. Would anyone like a summary from Ms. Dawkins, or are we comfortable with this as it was advanced for the... Okay, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So this item under consideration is for WBK, the contractor conducting the citywide watershed study to host a web portal platform to facilitate resident feedback for stormwater and drainage issues for 12 months at a cost of $9,040. This agenda item supports the city's strategic plan as it relates to excellent municipal services, objective two. The city provides equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient, reliable public services. Environmental stewardship, objective three, implement initiatives to protect the Fox River and preserve groundwater resources. And objective four, Geneva residents actively contribute to preserving the city's natural environment. If there are any additional questions, I am the staff member present this evening to hopefully answer those.
Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Anyone remotely? Anyone in the chamber? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt? Sorry. It's the mask.
Nay, nay.
I have Bruno disease. Ruby?
Aye.
And Kilburg?
Aye.
Six-two.
The item passes, item 12B, as in boy, with six affirmative votes, two "nay" votes, and one absent. Item 12C is to consider resolution number 2020-50, adopting the 2020 Affordable Housing Plan as presented. Is there a motion? Motion by, I believe, Berghardt and McGowan? Mr. DeGroot is present this evening. Ms. Dawkins has a brief summary prior to me even acknowledging Mr. DeGroot.
Okay, the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act requires municipalities where affordable housing represents less than 10% of the entire housing stock to prepare, adopt, and submit affordable housing plans to the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Based upon direction provided by the Committee of the Whole on August 3, 2020, the map included in the plan has been amended to only include entirely vacant properties unless property owners of occupied sites consented to the inclusion of their property for consideration. Notice was sent to nine owners of occupied properties. Responses were received from three, of which two wanted to be included on the map and one did not. The map in tonight's packet includes only those occupied properties that consented. While the adoption of an affordable housing plan is a requirement of the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, it also supports the city's council's priority of the strategic plan goal of economic vitality, objective one, to maintain an economically healthy population through the support of new housing opportunities and changes that may allow for a greater diversity of housing. And as the mayor indicated, Director DeGroot is here to answer any additional questions you have, although he was not prepared to do another presentation as we've done that already.
Are there any questions or comments for Director DeGroot? Relentlessly or in the chamber? Question, is that here?
Yes. Hey, can I come over? Should I?
Please join us in the pulpit, yes, please.
Hello.
So one of my questions, I think, was answered. Oh, sorry. I'm Lindsay McCall. So when I was reviewing the map, and Stephanie, you did answer my question that there were two people that had said that they would be interested. Do you know on the parcels that are on the map, and this is potentially for Director DeGroot, were they the smaller parcels or the larger parcels of land? If I'm looking, were they, like, some... I assume that there were some of these smaller ones, correct? Not these? Oh, sure.
The properties that were notified that were partially occupied, were at the corner of South and Burgess. So is that property in the center there that consented? And it was the Kouts-Petersen Farm on Route 38 that's partially occupied, they consented to be included.
Okay, and is that the one that I... Is that the one that you just, that was just annexed for the light industry, or is that...
No, that's further south than this area.
That was south, okay, thanks. That was just another follow-up.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Great. And then, as I was just comparing these parcels versus some of the one that were in the previous map, one of the questions that came into mind is that these are now vacant properties, which I understand, you know, has to be done due to restrictions of, you know, budget, so we couldn't necessarily talk to different developers and things. But out of curiosity, if these are vacant lands, is it really financially viable for a developer to come in and potentially put affordable housing in these smaller areas? One of the things that I just find a little concerning, and I hope that we can, as a community, can come together, is to see more areas within the downtown Geneva area, not necessarily on the outskirts, when we're trying to kind of incorporate people into our community. And I know, you know, obviously, as you guys know, I've had a lot of questions about the Lewis Road property because I'm trying to educate myself a little bit more about affordable housing in Geneva, and I think that integration is really important within the community. So I just want to be sure, as we're talking about areas of where we see affordable housing, let's keep in mind that developers may not be interested in having just small little pockets within the community because it's not financially viable for them. So that's just kind of some of my feedback as I was looking at this. And then the other question that I had, and it was kind of the last one, on the Lewis Road property in particular, the... There's the one area that has not been annexed yet. Are any of, are all of these other areas annexed? Is that the only specific area that's not within the city limits of Geneva? My map reading is terrible, you can ask my husband, this is why.
Pull it up again for everyone's benefit.
Okay, thank you.
So the heavy black line represents the city's boundaries. So you're right, the Lewis Road has a portion that's kind of a donut hole there. It's unincorporated. We also have properties along Kirk Road, North and South Kirk Road, that are not yet annexed. So those would also need to be annexed.
Okay. And so then typically, as we talk about some of the incentives for the developers, when you annex the property, is that something that, is it the city that you typically absorb those costs, or is that on the developers, that they have to... Any costs associated with annexing the land?
It's negotiated on a case-by-case basis.
And then typically, just out of, once again, out of curiosity, is there like a... Do we know how much that typically costs? Is it range? Like, what a cost would be? I'm just curious if it's, you know, as we talk about incentives and what we're doing for the community, if, when we're having all these incentives, I think it's great, it's great for business, it's great to be, bring people in, but I do worry about taxes being increased if we're taking in all of these, some of the incentives. Or is that more of like a planning and zoning question?
No, I'm just trying to... David, do you understand the question in general?
I think so. I mean, application fees and deposits, those are all standard fees, and they're minimal, less than a couple thousand dollars. But when you look at what's negotiated in an annexation agreement, it really depends on what is necessary to make the development happen and the cost of those improvements, whether it's extending electric service to the site, sanitary, sewer, water upgrades, whatever those may be. So it's really variable.
So something like the bigger parcels, it would probably be more costly because they may not have city water, things like that?
Potentially, right.
Okay. And so that would be something that could be negotiated with the developer itself, not...
Through an annexation agreement.
Yes, okay, great. Okay. I think those were the only clarifications I had on the map. Oh, actually, sorry, I had one more. Just out of curiosity, I noticed that the farmhouse that's on Peck, that was in the old map, and I believe it was August 13th that was just posted for bids to relocate that land, or that home. So is that, that parcel of land is no longer considered for an area for affordable housing?
That parcel of land, the city acquired, and it's part of the Prairie Green Preserve. We don't have any city services west of Peck Road. And there are no intentions to put city services west of Peck Road, so that was a decision of the city council that it's part of the Prairie Green Preserve.
Okay, perfect. Because I had watched a previous meeting where I know that there was conversation that that could have been...
And for the benefit of everybody, it took so long to get the House to out-for-bid because we hit winter and then we hit COVID. So it's just now gotten to a point where we can actually try to get that done before next winter.
Okay. All right. That was all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments on the plan as presented? Oh, excuse me, Alderman Kilburg?
As it relates to that parcel, what's the acreage of that parcel that the city owns out there? It would qualify, one of the couple acres?
It's about seven.
Seven acres. Is there anything in the, in the, in the Prairie Green acquisition? In other words, when we purchased that, is there anything in there that would limit us from dedicating that to affordable housing at some point in time, with a donation potentially?
I mean, it would be a change of policy from the city to...
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we got the acreage, it's vacant property. Is there anything as it relates to the covenant, as it relates to Prairie Green, that would prevent us from doing that? Is there anything as it relates to the covenant, as it relates to, to Prairie Green, that would, uh, prevent us from doing that?
No, there's nothing in there that, again, the only limitation would, would be is it's currently on well and septic, and there's, there's no electric or, no city electric or city water, or sanitary.
So, those, those would both be doable, though, wouldn't they?
I mean, it hasn't been investigated, so, I mean, everything has potential at the right cost.
Right, but it'd be, it'd be a fairly simple extension of our services currently.
I don't believe so.
Off of West Haven?
No, I don't believe so. That was part of the issue as to why the council made a policy decision years ago not to, um, develop west of Peck Road because it would require another lift station. It would require a, a lot more investment than what would be worth for that one seven-acre parcel.
But if it was affordable housing and if that's the objective...
That would be for the council to decide.
That would be a council decision, though.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
I was just going to clarify.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Berger?
I just wanted to thank Director DeGroot. I know you came to us thinking this was kind of a housekeeping measure, and we sent you on a totally different direction. This is a, certainly a different-looking affordable housing map than we had previously, but I think it meets some, could some consistency desires that the council had, and I think for members of the community to know that, again, this isn't saying these are the only places that could be affordable housing. This is just kind of a helpful tool for those developers when they call. And, of course, they could look at the one from five years ago and get some leads there, too. So, thank you, David, for your work on this.
Ms. Dawkins, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment, uh, a, uh, uh, I, I missed the commenter's name, but, uh, yeah, this, this map, you know, I look at this, and I think we all recognize this is, uh, specifically done to meet a specific state requirement. Uh, doesn't, uh, mean there isn't, there couldn't be affordable housing throughout the community, and I think, uh, I, for one, and I know others, uh, would, would like that. But, uh, I, I would like for us to continue robust discussions about, uh, how we continue to advance this and make it more of a real, uh, reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Marks?
Oh, forgive me.
Marks?
One more question.
Of course, go on up. How are you?
My name is Cheryl Brennan.
Uh, what's the last name, please?
B-R-E-N-N-A-N.
Thank you.
As to Councilman Bruno's, I believe it is, remark, is this a requirement by the state that every city has to have? When I read the act quickly on my phone right now, it says encourage to incorporate affordable housing. There was no word in quite required there.
It's, it's required if your affordable housing stock is less than 10%. And we're at 7.7%.
Okay, and I understand you want to put it into Lewis Road area there. And why wouldn't we, um, take already developments in progress and require that some portion of that become affordable housing? Rather than trying to stuff 45 homes on a small parcel of land that's also going to interrupt our traffic, our watershed, and our, our area? And I see there are multiple developments around the city happening now. Why wouldn't the city try to say one or two of every apartment or unit or whatever has to be dedicated to affordable housing? I understand that the, that could deter contractors, but if there are incentives for affordable housing, they could probably make up the law, the differences, I'm guessing or wondering.
If I may, Mrs. Brennan, um, I'd like to ask Director DeGroot, or perhaps if you'd prefer, Ms. Dawkins, to read your executive summary, which will address virtually every question you had.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It was all, uh, excuse me, it was, actually, it was, it was an answer to the question posted, forgive me.
Sure.
Are you familiar with that, David?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, we've been discussing for several years different strategies available to us to, uh, further the creation of affordable housing in Geneva. One of those would be an inclusionary housing ordinance where you do require a percentage of new developments. Uh, you could pick your threshold, say it's 10 units or more, 30 units or more, to do a set aside for affordable housing. If they can't do that, they would, they could pay, make a payment in lieu of providing those units, and those can go into a, like, a housing trust fund that the city could then utilize to acquire property and make affordable, or provide rental assistance or down payment assistance. We had, um, two policy discussions last year. I believe it was June and August of last year.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Stephanie to amplify or perhaps amend.
He's just going to have me read what you've already written, other than you?
I know you don't have it right before...
I don't have it right in front of me.
Got it, okay.
So...
This might be helpful to Mrs. Brennan and others.
Um, and so that, Ms. Brennan understands it was in response to the question of what it would take to consider adding that all new developments require 20% affordable. On June 10th, 2019, the Committee of the Whole of the City Council held a policy discussion regarding different affordable housing strategies. At the meeting, staff reviewed the city's past planning efforts with affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, and potential strategies to create affordable housing in Geneva. The strategies included development incentives, inclusionary housing requirements, a demolition tax, property contributions, accessory dwelling units, and tax increment financing. A second policy discussion was held by the Committee of the Whole on August 26th, 2019, where development incentives, inclusionary housing requirements, a demolition tax, and property contributions were reviewed in more detail. At the conclusion of the meeting, the committee directed the staff to draft incentives for the creation of affordable housing in Geneva. On January 6th, 2020, the City Council approved an inclusionary housing ordinance that provides incentives for the creation of affordable housing within Geneva. If the city wants to change course and revisit an inclusionary housing requirement, it should be done during strategic planning or at a future policy discussion meeting. The Affordable Housing Plan on the agenda this evening sets the goal of bringing the percentage of affordable housing units to a minimum of 10% of the total housing stock, and identifies the incentives we have adopted to reach that goal. So, and then again, given all that has happened in 2020, there's not been enough time to determine the effectiveness of these incentives. And as I recall, the council wanted to, to try out what we had put in place to see if those attracted affordable housing before looking at taking more, um, deeper measures.
If I may ask Mrs. Dawkins to perhaps share the... Mrs. Brennan's question is, why can't we then ask those current developments that are now moving forward to consider a percentage? The short answer is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would require a change in the rules in the middle of the game.
Correct.
So, we, we simply can't do that.
And there's already been public hearing?
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Mrs. Brennan? Thank you. Anyone else? Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion carries with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We move to item 12, yes, 12F, as in Frank, which was removed from the consent agenda by Alderman Swanson. It is to approve ordinance number 2020-24, amending Title IX Municipal Utilities, Chapter III Water and Sewer, Section I Definitions, and Section V Maintenance, Repair, and Replacement of Service Lines of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion? Motion by Maladra, seconded by... Seconded by Ruby, and the floor is Alderman Swanson's.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify, I noticed in the packet this week that there was a qualifier with respect to the fourth item in that, uh, change, and that had to do with the lead service lines. And the qualifier was basically stating that the service lines that would be reimbursed would be ones that had service interrupted, and that information was not included in the packet two weeks ago. So I wanted to make sure that the public knows, number one, that the first customers who could take advantage of this reimbursement would be ones that are having service work done or have their water service interrupted. And number two, that the total number would be subject to budgetary limitations. Of course, uh, the city would obviously consider increasing the budget in future years or making a budget amendment if demand is high, but I wanted to make it clear to everyone that it's not an open-ended offer to replace everyone's lead service lines.
And if, and if you want me to elaborate just slightly, um, obviously, the first intent of the program is that when you disrupt, um, lead service lines, so either by a water main repair or a water main replacement, the Illinois Department of Public Health does not let us do partial, so we can't connect our service to a lead line because it causes more disruption, so that's why those would take priority. But obviously, the goal overall is to, uh, eradicate, for lack of a better phrase, lead lines within the city of Geneva.
And, and you also mentioned that we are going to track the number of inquiries we have, and if there is a huge amount of demand, then we can consider in budgetary considerations upping that ante. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Item 12F? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready.
Okay, McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
Item 12, oops, item 12F passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We're jumping down to item 13, folks, Presentation of Ordinances, Resolutions, Petitions, and Bids. Item 13A is Consider Ordinance Number 2020-25, amending Title XI of the Geneva City Code, Zoning Ordinance, Section 11-11A-6 Parking Spaces and Design Requirements to Establish a Separate Parking Requirement for One Bedroom and Two Bedroom Apartments Within a Transit, Transit-Oriented Development. This is located at 609 South Third Street, folks. Is there a motion?
Bruno, so moves.
Bruno, so moves? Seconded by Ruby. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. Um, so for ease, I'm actually going to kind of introduce the next two items together because you'll see they are related. The first item is a requested text amendment to establish separate parking requirements for one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment, apartments within a transit-oriented development. The city's parking regulations require the proposed development to provide 1.5 parking spaces per one-bedroom apartment unit and 1.8 parking spaces per two-bedroom apartment unit. The applicant is proposing that these requirements be reduced to 1 and 1.5 respectively. For the proposed development of 54 one-bedroom apartments and six two-bedroom apartments, the required parking would be 63 spaces compared to the 92 spaces on, required under current regulations. One of the recommended strategies in the city's Adopted Homes for a Changing Region Plan was to commission a downtown parking study, recognizing that excess parking for downtown residential development can increase, increase development costs while wasting land and other resources. While the city has not yet commissioned a downtown parking study, the applicant's request to establish separate parking requirements for residential units in a transit-oriented development, or TOD, is consistent with the recommendation of the Homes for a Changing Region Plan. Therefore, staff conducted research on the required parking ratios for multifamily mixed-use buildings in other communities throughout the region, as well as the potential benefits created by TODs and the high cost of building parking spaces. Staff's research indicated that while there were no consistent standard used in determining required parking ratios, and while there, uh, there is a trend in lowering parking ratios in downtowns or in areas surrounding a train station. Studies conducted by other organizations have found that parking is consistently oversupplied and underutilized. Through lower parking requirement, lower requirements, the city will have a new incentive to encourage development near the metro station, as well as added benefits TODs can provide. The second item for the consideration of the council is a resolution granting site plan approval for the construction of a mixed-use building consisting of 60 residential apartment units, over 6,000 square feet of commercial space, and 63 off par, off-street parking spaces, um, at the location 609 South Third Street. These proposals support the city council's strategic plan priority regarding economic vitality, objective one, to maintain an economically healthy population through support of new housing opportunities and changes that may allow for greater diversity of housing, including specifically the action items spelled out in the strategic plan to promote mixed use and transit-oriented development. If the applicant's request to amend the zoning ordinance is approved, the request for site plan approval may be considered. However, if the request to amend the zoning ordinance is denied, the request for site plan approval cannot be considered in its current form. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request to establish separate parking requirements for apartments within TOD developments, and unanimously recommended site plan approval. Uh, we have with us this evening Director DeGroot, and I think he might have a brief presentation as well. Um, we also have the applicants who are joining us virtually on the screen, I think, and, there we are.
They're there.
Our applicant is there virtually, so. Director DeGroot?
I know what everyone's thinking. It's 9:45, and DeGroot is pulling up a PowerPoint. But, uh, that was such a great introduction, I don't think I have to go through much, much of it, so.
Sorry, sorry to steal your thunder.
No thunder stolen. If I could get this to work. Yeah, I think I did that correctly. So I won't, I won't repeat, uh, everything Stephanie said, but just a high-level overview, under the current code, 92 parking spaces are required. The proposed would be 63 parking spaces. A question that was brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was, why didn't the developers simply request a variation to reduce the required amount of parking? Um, and that's because there are limitations on how much of a variation you can request. Uh, you can request to reduce parking requirements by up to 20%, which would have brought it down to 73 spaces, not the 63 that is proposed, which the developers still felt was, um, excessive for a, a transit-oriented development or a TOD development. And as Stephanie mentioned, we, it was consistent with the recommendations in the Home for a Changing Region Plan to, to take a closer look at our parking standards, so we, uh, with the applicant's request for a text amendment, we did some additional research, um, to, to see if it warranted reducing our parking requirements. We were able to get responses from 27 communities, in large part because Glenn Allen did a very similar study last November. But we, we were able to build upon their study and get 27, uh, responses. The overall studies showed that our current rates of 1.5 for a one-bedroom and 1.8 for a two-bedroom are pretty much in line with other parking requirements. However, 13 of those 27 communities had specific, separate requirements for their TOD areas or their, their core downtown areas near the transit station. And when you look at those numbers, they, they are reduced, um, from the general parking requirements for apartments, and the proposal for one space per unit and 1.5 spaces, uh, per unit for a two-bedroom is in line with, with those communities are doing. Uh, we have looked at some other, some other studies that were done. Center for Neighborhood Technology studied 40 affordable and market-rate apartments and buildings near transit stations and within a half-mile of metro stations, and they found that, um, about, uh, 30% or a third of the parking spaces are unutilized and empty. Um, and that continues even as parking supply goes up, that utilization rate stays the same. So those types of developments are often overparked by, uh, one unneeded spot for every three units. The RTA, um, provided some information on parking costs, which drive, um, drive costs of development and can discourage development if the, your parking requirements are too high. Surface spaces cost between $5,000 and $10,000 a space, uh, to construct, and structure parking costs between $25,000 and $50,000 per space. There's a range there, but it depends if you're going overground or in, in a parking deck. So, what do those, those findings, those surveys, and those studies mean for this development? Um, the proposed parking ratio is consistent with what other communities are doing in their downtown areas. Um, the proposal to reduce the required parking by approximately a third is consistent with CNT's findings that, uh, these types of developments are often overparked by approximately a third. And then, if the developer was required to build the 29 additional spaces that they're asking, the text amendment for spaces would need to be put into a structure on this site, which would be a cost of a minimum of $725,000 if you're taking the low end of $25,000 of space for structured parking. So it has a substantial impact on a development, and if it doesn't kill the deal, it certainly gets passed through to the end users, the renters. It might not be enough to, to make it an affordable housing development, but it sure makes it more affordable. Um, so the second component of the text amendment is where should these, um, reduced parking requirements apply? Uh, Stephanie mentioned the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. The applicant had originally proposed to define, uh, the TOD district as higher-density mixed-use developments within approximately a half-mile of the train station. If you look at the map for our downtown, um, you know, our, our train station's situated at the southern boundary of the downtown area. So we, you know, that whole southern half-mile is not really that kind of more urban, uh, dense and pedestrian-oriented, uh, area. So staff had recommended looking at the boundaries of the downtown station area master plan and using those as, um, the boundaries where these reduced park, parking requirements could apply. Um, again, because, because our layout is unique with the train station at the southern edge, the majority of our pedestrian-oriented and urban areas north of the train station. And that downtown station area master plan was actually partially funded... And that downtown station area master plan was actually partially funded by a grant from the RTA, and we had to make this very same argument to the RTA to get that grant, that it might exceed your half-mile boundary, but this really is our, our core urban downtown area, and they agreed to those boundaries. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended narrowing those boundaries a bit more. They expressed concerns applying to the reduced parking ratios to the entire area, areas that were maybe farther away from really the commercial core of Third Street and State Street, where we have more on-street public parking, we have some off-street public parking available, we've got the commuter parking deck that's available on nights and weekends. So trying to define those boundaries, we looked at the map you see here, which is in the zoning ordinance now. This is the same area where we do not require additional parking for new businesses that are existing businesses that want to expand. So it's that same area where we have that moratorium, and it is, again, closer to that commercial core and our existing public parking lots. So with that changed, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment for one space per one-bedroom units and 1.5 spaces for two-bedroom units. And then moving to the, the site plan review request, started off by looking at the comprehensive plan. This is Opportunity Site 7, as it's shown in the plan. You can see that this, this is the property here, number seven. It was originally shown as a mixed-use building on the corner of First and Third, with maybe a commuter parking deck or shared parking deck behind that. The objectives listed in the plan for that site include the extension of the retail street wall along South Third Street to the corner of First Street, reinforcing the transit-oriented character of the area with buildings of increased height, three to four stories tall, mixed-use and pedestrian-oriented, and then stressing that parking lots should be located behind, behind and at the side of buildings, conveniently integrated but not prominently located within the area. This is a picture of the development, the proposed development, looking northeast from approximately the corner of First and Third. You can see that it meets several of those objectives with extending that retail storefront along South Third Street, nice open glass windows extending that. So you can see that it is active retail space and pedestrian-oriented, three to four stories tall. We have four stories here. The maximum building height in the zoning district is 50 feet. What is proposed is 44 feet. Just for reference, the library at its peak, I think is about 46 feet. Dodson Eight Building, kind of catty corner from this, is also over 46 feet at its peak with the pitched roof. So at the ridge, it's at about 46 feet, so it's in line with, with those developments. Gone through the location, but this kind of bird's-eye view gives you a better idea of how the site is parked. You could see that it is tucked behind the building, so it is not a prominent feature. There will be landscaping on the north edge, so you, you'll certainly be able to tell there's a parking lot behind, from the commuter parking lot to the north, but it will be screened from adjacent properties, and it's screened from the public rights of way. The proposed entrance is on First Street, in the existing curb cut on First Street, and that, that access point, those doors are large enough to accommodate emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles, garbage removal, so those, those vehicles won't be causing any congestion in the public streets. Sure.
So the corner there is...
So, so this would be South Third Street, and this would be First Street, and this is that landscaped area, south of the sidewalk. So you can see the retail space here also wraps the corner. You're welcome. Just shots of the elevations. We have a mix of building materials, recessed balconies, different highlights to kind of break up the monotonous size of the building, or would otherwise be monotonous, I should say. This is a view of the, the parking from the interior, so as you, as you enter in off South First Street, some of these will kind of be tucked under the building, and then the rest will be open. There is one deviation that the applicant is requesting as part of the site plan approval, and that's to reduce the drive aisle width. The code has a requirement of 24 feet. They're requesting 22 feet. In order to meet the setback requirements, because it's open parking, they're required to have a five-foot setback along this property line. They needed to be able to reduce that or ask for a variation on the setback, but they thought they would provide the setback, and 22 feet still allows a full car length to back out in 90-degree parking and maneuver safely out of the parking garage. Just an example of a typical apartment layout for the one-bedroom. And another elevation, or same, I should say, the same elevation. So I just wanted to provide that high-level overview. Happy to answer any questions, and if I could stop sharing the screen, Ron Dean is also available to answer questions.
We do have a question or a comment, I believe, from Alderman Bruno to begin things? And David, could I trouble you... Alderman Bruno, one moment. Could I, David, could I trouble you to formally introduce our guest from the development?
Sure. I'm trying to figure out how to stop sharing the screen. There we go, stop button.
There you go.
So with us this evening, we have Ron Dean from Sumac, in the bottom-left corner. You can answer any questions as well. Yes?
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I got an answer to my question earlier in the week. Would, would any of these residents qualify for the, the parking hang tag for like overnight parking or, you know, on-street parking?
No, sir. We, we reviewed that with Chief Passarelli this morning, and as the code is currently written, they would not qualify for those tags.
Great, thank you. I know there's a term I'm, I'm missing here, but what other, are there, what other stages does this project have to go through with the city?
This would be the final stage in, in terms of the approval process, and then they would have to submit final engineering plans for approval and building permits.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Marx, did you have your hand up, sir?
Yes, I do, Kevin.
All yours.
Thank you, Mayor. David, quick question. I mean, it looks like you're almost one parking space per unit. Where would the guests or visitors park then in this, with this? Is that going to be off, you know, off on the street, or how do they plan on taking care of that?
If there's, if there's not guest parking available in the garage, we do have the commuter parking deck just to the north of the property and commuter parking lots adjacent to the property that are available on nights and weekends for guest visitors. If there's probably more public parking in a one-block vicinity there than there is anywhere else, so they would utilize the public parking in those hours.
So they can use those on, on weeknights and, and weekends, on, on weekends, correct?
Correct.
Is, is any of this set aside then for the commercial parcel, commercial square footage, or is it all just deemed for the residential? Because there is some commercial space there, too.
Right. So our parking requirements, that map that I showed currently does not require new parking for new commercial. So it's, the parking that is provided would be for the residential tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Thought I saw another. Alderman Burkhardt?
So I understand why we're, looking at these together tonight, because one A has to really happen for B, but I'm also trying to think, like, the impact on the future. I mean, so you mentioned Dodson Apartments. Does this affect them at all? I mean, obviously, they're already built, and they built their parking, the spots they needed under the ordinance at the time. Would it be only if somebody, like, added another level of apartments or decided to... I guess I'm trying to think, does it impact anyone who already has apartments in this area?
That already have apartments? No. I'm sorry, Dodson, Dodson Place was a PUD, and they were granted a reduction in their parking requirements to 1.25 spaces per unit, just across the board, regardless if you're one-bedroom or two-bedroom. They actually have a surplus of parking that they give to their commercial tenants in their garage, because not everyone's using them. So it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect existing apartments, but it would, if somebody wanted to convert office space to residential, it would lower the parking requirements they have to offset, or any new developments that are proposed within that defined boundary.
And I think what some of the Aldermen are getting at is we're trying to, like, I remember when I used to live in apartments and you're trying to, like, car jockey, you know, over the week, moving your car because you don't have a spot. I mean, so that's, that would be the concern on the other side. If you don't have parking for the renters or, you know, the residents of the building, they're going to park on surrounding streets and upset neighbors and things, but we feel like in this circle that we have, or actually, sorry, it's not a circle anymore because it's the Planning Commission, but there's a lot of public parking options for people in that situation.
There, there are, and I think part of the conversation we have with the Planning and Zoning Commission is that it, these type of units tend to be like self-selecting. If I have two vehicles and there's only one available to me, I'm not going to rent there. I'm going to go to Brittany Court or wherever else I need to go so I can accommodate both of my vehicles, or I'll probably have to put one in storage if I really need to live that close to the train station. So it's, I, I think there's some self-policing that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Maladra. And just a courtesy heads-up to the council, it's 9:57 according to my phone. We traditionally do not extend meetings past 10 o'clock unless there's no objection of doing so. Any objection of continuing this meeting past 10 o'clock? Okay. That's 10 a.m. Alderman Maladra.
I'll be fast, I promise. So I was, I was looking at other cities, too, trying to figure out what their parking requirements are. So first question is, the deck that you were showing, can I get a hold of that?
The, the deck I was showing?
Yeah. And while you're looking for that, my second question is, what's a dwelling unit considered?
A, a living unit, whether it's one-bedroom or two-bedroom, or...
So if it's one-bedroom, is that...
It's a dwelling.
If it's two-bedroom, is that one dwelling unit or two?
One dwelling unit.
Okay. You don't have to look anymore.
Okay.
Because every, every city that I looked at referred to parking spaces per dwelling unit, but it seemed to me like that definition changed from town to town. Wheaton was impossible for me to figure out. They have this downtown overlay district, which I didn't understand. Glenn Allen looked higher, Almere's looked higher than what we're looking at here, so I'm a little bit curious where your medians came from, so if you have that data.
It should all be in the report.
It's in there. Okay, I missed that, sorry. Thanks.
Alderman Kilburg. Do these changes apply to, like, developments that are in progress?
I guess we don't have any apartment buildings that are in the review process at the moment.
Well, what is the status of the Mill Race property, then? In other words, you're telling me tonight, then, that these new parking standards are going to apply to the Mill Race property?
As proposed, it would apply to the Mill Race property. They are...
What effect will that have on that property?
They're in line with what Mill Race was looking at originally. So I don't, it, I think it...
Does it...
It would be in line with what they were proposing.
What does that mean?
They were proposing a similar parking ratio of, a reduced parking ratio. They probably would have come through with a planned unit development and requested a reduced parking ratio of 1.25 per unit or a similar one space for one-bedrooms and 1.5 for two-bedrooms.
Has that been a holdup as it relates to the Mill Race property coming before the council at some point in time soon?
It hasn't. Our largest, our largest delay has been just waiting on responses from IDOT and solidifying access points.
Maybe the developer could speak to the facade of the building?
How this blends with the other structures on Third Street.
Sure. The idea was to use the materials that Dodson Place and others north on Third Street had used, the, the stone, the siding, the hardy board, use those in the same material palette, but use it in a little more contemporary or modern, depending on your terminology, architecture. So the tones, the textures, colors would still follow along what, what had been done previously north along Third Street, but create an end cap building that's a little more contemporary.
Is that it, sir?
Yeah, if they have specific questions about a specific item on the facade, I could talk to that if you had.
Just the color, I guess, is my question. And I guess I didn't study it that closely.
Same palette that you, you have on North Third Street, kind of the pastels, earth tones.
Is that it?
He's frozen.
I can still see you.
Might need to use the phone number.
Oh, no, now he's smiling, he's changing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Are you finished?
So the colors were, were to be compatible with what's north on Third Street. Earth tones, wood, brick, those kind of things that we've seen up Third Street, that was the idea of the architect.
I guess my next question would be construction, the construction phase and staging, and we're going to be, you're well aware that there's going to be a third rail that'll be under construction here in the near future on the south side of the current tracks. And I'm wondering, are we anticipating that this project would disrupt an already busy area, especially in the morning and the afternoon with, with commuter traffic? Hopefully, if COVID ever ends, there will be commuters again. And do you have sufficient space onsite to do all of the storage of your construction materials? And what are some of the challenges that you might anticipate as it relates to building on this specific site? It's an odd intersection, you got a lot of traffic flow, you got the government center right across the street. I'm sure that you thought about it. I guess I'd like to hear a little bit about what your thoughts are and how you might deal with this all.
Glad to speak to that. The contractor's already put through an operations plan, and we reviewed it briefly. The idea would be to primarily build a building in a counterclockwise direction from Third Street, cycling the building around to Vitabia and First Street to, to build the building, all the work we done from inside in the parking lot. So you'd have a crane placed there, staging and, and materials there. We would request the, because the building's built to the lot line, that we can close the sidewalks on First and Third Street. We might be able to phase those, depending on what part's being worked on, but we wouldn't need pedestrians to, to cross the street to avoid the construction site since we are building on the lot line.
So in other words, those using the commuter lot, then, the distant one to the east, they'd need to cross then at that intersection on First, at the government center, and use the sidewalk or that area on the south side of the First Avenue, or First Street.
And Dean, if I may, when the UP is doing their construction, they have a temporary construction easement for that entire parking lot, so there will be no commuter parking in that lot when the UP is under construction. So prior to that time, perhaps, but just so that you know, once the UP starts, they have full access to that.
Will there be overlap as far as construction, then, is what you're saying, with the, with the UP?
We do not have a start date for the UP.
I thought that that was...
They are still, they have not given a start date for putting out to bid. We're still looking at plans.
We're hoping to get started on the site work late October, early November, so that we can get foundations in before winter.
This fall?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all the questions I have. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the, in the chamber or remotely? Any additional questions for either Mr. DeGroot, Mr. Alderman Burkhardt?
Any additional questions for either Mr. DeGroot, Mr. Alderman Burkhardt? I think you're good. Thank you.
For Mr. Dean, right? Can you talk about the, that's quite a bit of retail space you have there? It's very high-profile retail space, and I think we'd hate, you know, for the gateway to the town to, to have kind of empty vacant retail. How confident do you feel like you could find a retailer that wants to take that in this current, current environment? And what kind of, do you have a vision for what the perfect retailers would be for that space?
Well, I think the building will take at least a year or so to build, so you're, you're going to be hopefully past COVID before we need to lease that space up. And my understanding is there's quite a few people who want to be on Third Street, and there often isn't enough space available. I don't know how that changes as COVID continues. But our, our vision would be those spaces are sized well for, I think a great use would be, I call it a convenience store, someplace quick to stop in the morning or in the evening, pick up miscellaneous things. The addition of 60 households above provides instant customers. And then maybe there's, there could be a dry cleaner, it could be a cafe. We think there's a lot of good opportunities for those size spaces.
Very good. And do you have a, I'm sorry, this is probably in the packet. What's the price of the rental per month or, that you're aiming for, for the one- and two-bedroom?
Yeah, they range from $1,800 to $2,100 per month.
Very good. And do you think it'll be younger people or a mix of...
Well, it's an interesting market, and what some of the market analysis has shown is that, yes, there's definitely always the younger professionals who, there's a market for that. There's also empty nesters. There's folks who want to stay in the community but maybe don't need their, their three-bedroom house anymore. There's actually a group of, I'd call them the divorcees, who still need to be in the neighborhood, but they're not living in the big house anymore. So there's a, a mix and match of what, what we see will fill it up.
Very good. Thank you very much.
There's definitely, definitely demand in Geneva for, for apartments.
And you develop, have you developed similar buildings in other western suburbs or Chicago suburbs?
In the western suburbs, no. With our co-developer Jupiter, we've done some up in the northern suburbs. We've looked at some properties in Huntley. We've done quite a few closer in, in Oak Park, Evanston, and in the city of Chicago.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else remotely or in the chamber? Alderman McGowan.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Dean, virtually. This development will be very close to existing bike paths that link to the paths, the bike and pedestrian paths along the river. So what kind of amenities are in place or going to, or are planned to make this development bike-friendly?
We will have bike parking. We've been laying out now that we're moving a little more detailed designs, some park bike storage on the ground floor. There's some space in the parking area, some leftover space. And then each floor will have a storage space dedicated for the different apartments. We're thinking hopefully we can lay out for part of each of those storage rooms to contain some, some wall-mounted bike space hanging units. But yes, we want to support the biking, and the TOD really encourages that. We want to be, you know, providing the right lifestyle for the type of clients that want to come rent in this type of building.
Okay, that's great to hear, especially with the reduced number of parking spaces. You know, you definitely want to encourage tenants to be, like, biking and walking and using public transportation.
Absolutely.
Et cetera. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Alderman Bruno, a second by Alderman Ruby on this matter. Yeah, this is just the text amendment, item, I believe it's 12A?
13A.
13A? Excuse me. Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Dawkins?
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Nay. Marks, nay.
McGowan?
Aye.
Seven, one.
Wait till my glasses stop fogging up, I'm sorry. Item 13B, folks, is to consider Resolution Number 2020-61 granting site plan approval for the construction of a mixed-use building consisting of 60 residential apartment units, 6,014 square feet of commercial space, and 63 off-street parking spaces at 609 South Third Street in Geneva, Illinois. Is there a motion? Motion by Burkhardt, seconded by Ruby. Any additional clarification, Ms. Dawkins, you want to make?
No, sir.
David, anything additional you'd like to share? Mr. Dean, anything you'd like to share regarding this?
No, no, thank you.
Questions or comments? Alderman Kilburg.
Just out of curiosity, how many students do you believe this, these apartments will generate for District 304?
Students? I, I think it'd be minimal because they're one, one-bedroom primarily, so you wouldn't have too many school-aged kids.
Is there, is there an estimate?
Oh, let's see, there's one, two, six two-bedroom units? So maybe, I don't know, you could have three to four kids, maybe? David, I don't know if there's a, a calculation. Do you know if a...
We, we do have a formula that estimates the number of children, but that's only if it's a subdivision or a planned unit development. In this case, it's, it's neither of those, so we didn't, we didn't run those numbers. There's not a cash contribution or a land contribution required. But minimal, it should... They, they inquired about the project, and we told them that it doesn't trip that requirement.
Anyone else from the chamber or remotely? Ms. Dawkins, roll call vote, please.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Alderman Burkhardt. All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned, and we will begin the committee of the whole meeting in...
And it should be quick.
20 seconds. Yes, sir. Microphones are off. Folks, our final meeting of the evening, the Committee of the Whole Meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the council members are present and joining us remotely. Alderman Caven, of course, is absent. There is no one left in the... Item 3, approved committee of the whole meeting minutes from August 3, 2020. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan, seconded by Ruby. All in favor, please say, oh, excuse me, roll call vote, excuse me.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Items of business 4A, consider draft ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Section 4-2-13, liquor license fees and number, by adding one Class C4 license wine and beer bar for Geneva Winery located at 426 South Third Street. Is there a motion? Bruno makes the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Ruby. Ms. Dawkins?
So this is, like the mayor said, an application for a C4 liquor license from Geneva Winery for the purpose of serving or selling beer in addition to the wine that is manufactured onsite.
Any questions or comments for the city administrator or...
Or me.
Or the city administrator? Did I say that?
No, you did.
Okay. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Item 4A passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 4B is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a plot of easement for the southwest corner of River Lane and Fulton Streets. Is there a motion? Motion by Burkhardt, seconded by Swanson. Ms. Dawkins?
Hogan Construction is the developer of a three-lot residential project that needed to grant an additional public utility drainage easement, storms who are private easement and access private easements to accommodate the placement of the homes. Engineering Resources Associates has submitted the plot of easement to grant the new easements. The plot has been reviewed by city legal counsel, and approval is recommended for city execution. Staff has confirmed the placement of the public utilities, and they support the proposed easements. And I'm the only one left here this evening, so if you have any questions, I might have to write them down and give you the answer later.
On item 4B, any questions or comments for the city administrator? Yes, Alderman Kilburg.
The print's awfully fine here. What are, what are the actual easements with the neighbors? In other words...
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
The question is, what concessions are we making as far as easements?
They're the required easements they need for all of those various improvements in order to make the three homes fit on the lots.
Okay. To what degree were they, though?
Again, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand.
In other words, there were, there were easements as it relates to adjacent properties as well? Is that what you're saying?
No. Where, where these are, it's for these three, for this development.
Understood. But in other words, to get the, the homes on the lot, there were concessions that had to be made as far as the, the adjacent properties, as far as the easements? For setbacks?
I, I'll have to review your question to Brian Shiber, because honestly, I do not know. This is an engineering question that I, is not my area of expertise. But certainly, we can get that answer to you before next, before the council considers it at the city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra? Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Item 4B passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're at the motion to adjourn section. Is there a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Roll call vote to adjourn.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.